Pero tengo que decirles que hay muchas ideas buenas que pueden beneficiar a la comunidad, pero no es posible si no tienes líderes con visión y líderes con compromiso y firmeza para hacer las cosas. No es todos los días que los miembros del consejo, siete de ellos, que tienen necesidades diferentes, pueden reunirse y aprobar $332,000 para construir este hermoso parque de ejercicio que va a tener una fábrica de beber, equipos de gimnasia afuera, un piso de granito de agua, un baño de agua de piedra, luz, paisaje tolerante a la sequía debido a la necesidad de agua, todavía será muy bonito, una cerca de seis metros de madera y una cuna de bicicleta. Y, ya saben, uno de los campeones, al principio, incluso antes de que llegara al consejo sobre salud, es la mujer del consejo que representa este lugar, y esa es la mujer del consejo, Michelle Martinez, así que por favor ayúdenme a saludar a la mujer de consejo, Martinez.
Quiero agradecer a nuestro consejo que no pudieron estar aquí hoy, pero estoy aquí representando a mis colegas y, ya saben, ciertamente represento este lugar. Y les diré que esto no sería posible si no fuera por nuestro equipo. Les diré que tenemos campeones dentro de nuestro equipo que quieren movernos en la dirección correcta. Así que quiero agradecer a nuestro director ejecutivo, Eduardo Mueve, Jeannie Hulado, Ron Ono. Saben, nuestros equipos de parques y cunas han estado allí desde el principio. Solo necesitaban la liderazgo de arriba y realmente establecer la política correcta para que puedan hacer las cosas correctas. Y, ya saben, el consejo se unió y se dio cuenta de la importancia de realmente reunir a una comunidad y reunir las necesidades y necesidades de una comunidad como esta. Y quiero agradecer a la organización Sacred, yo veo a Paulina aquí. Pero también quiero agradecer, antes de que la organización Sacred entrara en juego, Latino Health Access ha estado aquí durante más de veinte años. Y quiero agradecerles porque antes de que yo fuera miembro del consejo y estaba contrayendo y corriendo, tuve una gran relación con América Abracho. América Abracho me conoció desde que tenía 15 años y ella comparte esa historia. Y les diré que a medida que pasaban los años y decidí correr por el cargo a la edad de 24 y comenzar a campañar, ella siempre lo escuchaba, que la salud era muy importante y la resistencia de la ciudad y lo que estaban tratando de hacer. Y así tomé por mí cuando me electé ser campeón de la salud, pero ser campeón para personas que no estaban proporcionando la voz en la Cámara de Ciudad. Y esto es de lo que se trata realmente. Se trata de ahora reunir voces. En un momento dado hace muchos años, no verías a Paulina o a gente en Sacred en el tercer piso. No se les permitía allí. Y hoy los vemos más que nadie. Así que eso es un testamento de que las cosas están cambiando en la Cámara de Ciudad y que estamos escuchando a todas las personas, todos los paseos de vida aquí en la ciudad de Santa Ana para mejorar esta comunidad. Quiero agradecer a nuestros exploradores, sé que recientemente solo quieren reconocimiento. Y así quiero agradecerles por estar aquí y ser socios de nuestros parques y recreación, una abertura general aquí. Pero hay una correlación aquí cuando hablamos de salud y hablamos de seguridad pública. Necesitamos trabajar juntos, mano a mano, porque la gente no va a querer venir a este parque de ejercicio si no se sienten seguros. La gente no va a querer ir a nuestro centro de comunidad o todo lo demás que hacemos en relación con la salud pública si no es seguro. Así que necesitamos continuar trabajando con nuestro departamento de policía para que nuestras familias puedan apreciar y compartir las grandes oportunidades que estamos proporcionando para todos ustedes aquí.
Uno, dos, tres.
Para la ciudad de Santa Ana es importante porque es parte de su desarrollo. Y para la comunidad es importante porque nuestros niños ya no van a estar en cuatro paredes sino van a tener un lugar donde puedan hacer ejercicio y no tengan obesidad. Es importante para su salud y para el bienestar de toda la comunidad. Anteriormente ya no se contaba con espacios abiertos para la comunidad en general, pero hoy en día nos están escuchando y este es un ejemplo de eso que estamos pidiendo.
Bueno, como saben, en este área el zip code 92701 fue muy poco parqueado. Y hoy con la liderazgo del consejo y nuestro equipo de ciudad hemos podido no solo traer un centro de comunidad a la escuela de Garfield que proporcionará actividades de ejercicio y de descanso, pero aquí ahora en este sitio podremos proporcionar equipos de ejercicio. Y, nuevamente, la gente que quiere andar en bicicleta aquí también puede hacer eso. Y así creo que es muy importante para esta comunidad. Uno, porque todos sabemos que en la comunidad latina, el tipo 2 diabetes ha plagado nuestra comunidad. Y una cosa que sé, mientras he caminado y he hablado con nuestros residentes, siempre han pedido que necesitaban actividades de afuera porque es una comunidad muy densa aquí, muchos apartamentos. Y en esos apartamentos no eran capaces de jugar dentro de la estructura. Así que ahora podrán salir a través de la calle y venir aquí a principios de abril y utilizar el equipo de ejercicio y estar fit. El espacio abierto y el uso conjunto ha sido muy importante para esta comunidad. Y así los escuchamos fuerte y claro y tomamos compromiso en proporcionar tanto parque y espacio abierto y uso conjunto aquí en este 92701 porque fue el área más parqueada en la ciudad entera. Y ahora estamos muy afortunados de que estamos aumentando nuestro espacio parqueado aquí con el uso conjunto, con el distrito escolar y luego aquí con la propiedad de la ciudad de Santa Ana.
Aquí en el Hacienda de Santa Ana, estamos comprometidos en nutrir el interés en la historia local recogiendo, preservando y haciendo disponibles materiales de valor histórico duradero relacionados con el desarrollo de la ciudad de Santiana. Pueden descubrir su historia rica de la comunidad, contribuir a su preservación.
Cabe, listo, comienza. Lelegio a la bandera de Estados Unidos unidos y a la república por la cual se siente una nación bajo Dios indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos.
Tenemos, si pueden sentarse, Jack Abeline, ¿están aquí? Él va a darnos, ese es nuestro jefe de policía, él va a darnos nuestra ubicación hoy.
Adelante, padre, les agradezco por otra noche reunidas. Les agradezco por líderes que ciertamente serán servidores de nosotros como comunidad mientras reunimos y que continúen dándoles sabiduría de arriba, que les ayudaran a hacer las cosas que necesitan hacer bien y que nosotros como ciudadanos y especialmente de la ciudad, Señor, nos encantaría disfrutar de nuestra vida aquí a través de su liderazgo en nombre de Jesús.
Gracias, pueden sentarse.
Señor pro tem, creo que tienen el primer item, Consul General Boliviano Marco Antonio.
Sí, señor jefe, vamos a ver si el consulado, si él y algunos otros consulados generales.
¿Están aquí todavía? Así que continuemos con la reunión y si pueden darnos saber cuándo llegan, bueno, oh, están aquí.
Están aquí, está bien.
Bueno, sigamos adelante, por favor, adelante.
Gracias, señor jefe, y si pudiera tener al consulado del consulado mexicano también, Mario Cuevas, también, también. Este es un gran honor tener a ambos con nosotros aquí adelante, Marco Antonio, para que podamos captarlos en la cámara. Así que es mi privilegio tener a los dos representantes de dos oficinas diferentes, del oficio aquí que representa la comunidad boliviana, Marco Antonio Valverde, que representa no solo California, sino muchos estados en el país. Así que su región cubre varios estados, les dejaré que Marco Antonio explique eso en unos minutos. Y también tenemos a Mario Cuevas, quien es el consulado general del consulado mexicano aquí en Santa Ana. Así que representa el entero condado de Orange. Así que el propósito de ambos estar aquí fue una pensión y algo que Marco Antonio trajo a mi atención, el consulado de Bolivia. Y él me estaba hablando de lo que hicieron en Los Ángeles y representando diferentes consulados en América Latina y en América Central. Fue nombrado el presidente o el delegado y el representante de ese organismo, pero es en honor del Día de la Herencia Hispania. Hablar de los logros, hablar de las buenas cosas que están sucediendo con la comunidad latina. Sabemos que eso es muy vivo y presente aquí en Santa Ana porque tenemos una comunidad tan diversa, pero tenemos una comunidad muy hispana, una comunidad muy latina también y una comunidad muy mexicana como sabe su consulado general de México. Esto es probablemente uno de los districts más latinos, los más mexicanos en el estado y en el país entero. Así que estamos muy orgullosos de la herencia, estamos muy orgullosos de la cultura, los logros. Y desafortunadamente, ya saben, estamos en temporada de campaña y escuchamos candidatos de ambos partidos hablar de personas y problemas. Y desafortunadamente hemos oído mucha retórica sobre latinos y han estado en las noticias mucho, ya saben, con respecto a la inmigración, con respecto a, ya saben, la justicia criminal. Y así pensé lo que ambos consuls explicaron fue que querían venir y celebrar los logros de la comunidad latina. Y creo que eso es algo muy bueno porque querían mostrar el balance, la riqueza. Mucha de lo que, ya saben, la cultura tiene que ofrecer y a veces se pierde cuando escuchamos debates y escuchamos discursos y la gente dice que, ya saben, latinos o mexicanos, ya saben, no son altos logros, se habla de forma muy derogatoria y sabemos que no es el caso. Pero a veces es bueno recordar nuestra comunidad porque tenemos muchos niños, tenemos una comunidad muy joven. Y cuando escuchas eso tiende a hacerte sentir inferior como niño cuando creces con mucha gente diciendo que ustedes no cuentan mucho, ustedes no logran bien, ustedes, ya saben, no son educados, no son intelectuales. Y creo que es exactamente por eso que queremos deshacer ese mito. Y creo que aquí sabemos que los latinos excelven en las academias, excelven en los artes, excelven en la finanza, en tantos caminos de vida diferentes. Pero desafortunadamente la conversación se reduce y baja a un nivel muy bajo. Así que creo que con los consulados generales en América Latina o representando América Latina aquí en California, lo que están tratando de hacer es tener una conversación diferente, no hablar de quién es correcto o quién es incorrecto, sino solo hablar de, ya saben, todo el valor que los latinos han traído, igual que todos los inmigrantes antes, igual que los irlandeses, igual que los alemanes, aquellos de, ya saben, de Europa nordesta, aquellos de Europa sur, aquellos de Europa oriental. Todos los que han venido a este país han contribuido, así como los latinos. Y es muy importante recordarnos eso porque, desafortunadamente, ya saben, pueden tener una discusión muy difícil que no describe las contribuciones bien. Así que voy a ir adelante y dejar que ambos señores hagan hablar de eso. Todavía estamos celebrando el Día de la Herencia Hispania, así que esta es una discusión muy temprana. Vamos a hablar de cosas diferentes, pero quería que les contaran un poco sobre la gente que representan porque representan una tanta riqueza. Y la comunidad latina es muy diversa, no es una comunidad homogénea. Verán que hay diferencias, ya sea Cuban American, Puerto Rican American, ya sea mexicano American, Suramericano y Centralamericano. Hay mucha diversidad rica y esa es la belleza de nuestro país, es que podemos agregar todos esos diferentes costumbres y tradiciones y historias y mezclarlos todos aquí. Así que, ¿por qué no dar el plazo primero a Marco Antonio Valverde, que viene a nosotros de Los Ángeles? Y ha viajado un poco más allá de Mario, ¿verdad?, quien está más cerca aquí en Santa Ana. Así que, Marco Antonio, el plazo es tuyo, gracias por venir.
Muchas gracias, jefe de consejo, muchas gracias, señor jefe, miembros del consejo. Siempre es un gran placer estar aquí en la ciudad de Santa Ana, siempre es muy open para todos. La razón por la que estoy aquí es que el año pasado se estableció en la ciudad de Los Ángeles y coordinado con el Día de la Herencia, Día de la Herencia Hispania. Vimos que era importante tener una fecha específica para las contribuciones de la comunidad latinoamericana. ¿Por qué una comunidad latinoamericana? Porque se separa de los demás. No es una separación, pero también contribuye a lo que un país hace, a lo que Estados Unidos representa. Cada persona que llegó a este país empezó algo que se basaba en la grandeza primero, para su familia, para su comunidad y para el país. Podrían ver que la comunidad latina es muy grande, lo ven en las universidades, escuelas de Ivy League, escuelas, funcionarios públicos, policía, fuerzas armadas. Hay miembros de la comunidad latina que trabajan muy duro para llegar donde están y sacrifican mucho para alcanzar esos objetivos que establecieron. Y es importante reconocer el trabajo que cada mujer y hombre hizo para el bienestar de las comunidades. Nosotros, los consulados, y digo nosotros porque soy el portavoz del entero grupo de consulados latinoamericanos que se establecen en la California sur, que va de México a Argentina, vemos que nuestra comunidad tiene que trabajar por eso, lo que están dando. Y que no solo tienen que trabajar para sus familias, sino también para sus comunidades. Que nuestra comunidad tiene que ser ciudadanos que no obedecen la ley, que tienen que contribuir a lo que son, a su ciudad, a su familia, a su comunidad. No solo a través de trabajo duro, sino también a actividades de la comunidad, para ser lo que pueden ser, para alcanzar sus objetivos. Como dice la Constitución, tenemos el derecho a la búsqueda de la felicidad y esa felicidad se da por cada uno de nosotros. Cuando alcanzan ese objetivo obtendrán otro objetivo, pero ese objetivo es, en última instancia, vivir en una comunidad, contribuir a esa comunidad por la grandeza. Por eso California es un estado tan grande porque combina muchos comunidades, muchas culturas, es una comunidad multiethnica, multicultural, multilingüe. Ves la riqueza en la comida que hay, en el idioma, en los películas, en la televisión, en muchas cosas que podrías ver la contribución de nuestra comunidad. Y por eso tenemos que celebrar todos esos hombres y mujeres que contribuyeron a eso, a la grandeza. Algunos de ellos son de segunda generación, son estadounidenses, no de segunda generación que migraron, ellos nacieron aquí. Y lo que tienen que hacer es mantener alto su herencia que tienen, que contribuyeron. Y mantener ese espíritu siempre alto es un beneficio para toda la comunidad. No estamos aquí para decir que este país es mejor, que ese país es mejor. No, todos somos uno y unidos nos sentaremos. Muchas gracias y gracias por este tiempo.
Gracias, Marco Antonio. Mario, ¿por qué no nos das unas palabras, por favor?
Qué tal, muy buenas tardes, buenas tardes a todos. Es mi privilegio estar aquí. Muchas gracias, si me permiten hablar en español. Veo una gran cantidad de gente, no solamente hispana que habla español, pero es una gran satisfacción para nosotros ver gente anglo que maneja muy bien el español. Nos sentimos muy halagados también de que el enriquecer la relación a través de la transmisión y de que los niños hablen ya los dos idiomas bien, cambiando los tiempos que habían pasado antes, es un plus para ellos y también nos permite engrandecer y empoderar más a la juventud. Para el consulado de México en el condado de Orange, con base en Santa Ana, orgullosamente además por ser la cabecera del condado y porque representa la ciudad más mexicana fuera de México. Es para mí un gran honor celebrar con todos ustedes el Día Latinoamericano aquí después de un mes de hispanidad y coincidiendo también con las fiestas patrias de varios países latinoamericanos, centroamericanos, especialmente México. Lo que nosotros queremos aquí es aportar nuestro esfuerzo para la comunidad mexicana e hispana para que cada vez se reconozca más su contribución al enriquecimiento, no solamente la fuerza económica que hay aquí, sino también toda la aportación cultural, la parte que existe donde se fortalecen las relaciones al interior del país. Con todo el respeto que se merece el país además porque lo engrandece de una manera tal que son doblemente ricos los mexicanos que crecen aquí y que se forman. La verdad es para nosotros un gran privilegio saber que la juventud se está comprometiendo también e integrando cada vez más a este país. Hablo por los millones de mexicanos que ya nacieron aquí, los que vinieron y que además han aportado su esfuerzo para ser más grandes y más nobles a este gran país. Es por ello que es un orgullo para nosotros aportar nuestro esfuerzo como consulado en las tareas y el mandato que nosotros tenemos para ayudarlos y sobre todo para conformar y para reforzar la relación México-Eeuropa. México es un socio muy importante en el condado de Orange, en todos los sentidos, intercambios culturales muy fuertes, la relación histórica, el comercio, el intercambio también de bienes y servicios. Es una gran satisfacción ver cómo el condado también ha crecido, la ciudad de Santa Ana juega un papel muy importante aquí políticamente hablando, económicamente hablando y sobre todo por la gran capital humana que tiene para el engradecimiento. Es para mí, pues es un gran honor. Es un gran honor estar aquí compartiendo con ustedes la celebración del Día de la América Latina y también reconocer la contribución del país latinoamericano. Así que para mí es un gran honor y placer estar aquí de nuevo. Espero trabajar con ustedes en el consulado mexicano. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, señores consulados. Ya saben, tengo algunas proclamaciones para la gente que representa al consulado general aquí. Y déjenme decirles sus nombres mientras les vamos a dar sus proclamaciones y sé que el consulado general asegurará que lleguen en las manos de buena suerte. Roberto Benitez Fernández del país de Paraguay, Leopoldo Castrillo, representando Nicaragua, embajador Liliana Sino de Perú, Diego Jaramillo del Ecuador, embajador Luis Zica de Uruguay y por supuesto el consul general de México, Mario Cuevas. Así que proclamamos este día como Día de la América Latina aquí en Santa Ana. Y solo un par de "por lo que" que hemos incluido aquí para que reconozcamos que Estados Unidos reconoce y celebra el Día de la Herencia Hispania de septiembre 15 hasta octubre 15. Santa Ana es una de las poblaciones más alta de latinos en el país y los latinos han hecho contribuciones en el desarrollo económico-político de la ciudad de Santa Ana, la expresión cultural de los latinos ha fortalecido y enriquecido la diversidad y cultura de la ciudad. Tantas otras cosas que podemos ir en detalle, pero en un alcance amplio, creo que los latinos en California, en el sur oeste, en el país entero han hecho tantas contribuciones innumerables que es muy importante cultivar eso en nuestra juventud, no solo la juventud latina, sino todos nuestros hijos. Que crezcan sabiendo que hay una riqueza en nuestro país que todos aquí contribuyen. Así que es especialmente importante que nos aseguremos de que entendamos eso. Y a ambos señores, gracias por unirnos, gracias por asegurar que las conversaciones, las discusiones nunca se alejan de nosotros y la gente no es tan crítica de, ya saben, una comunidad que no están controladas. Y a veces, ya saben, lo que pasa en la política es que hay mucha retórica que se expone y la gente desafortunadamente lo creerá. Y los niños crecen con complejos de inferioridad, creen que son menos que los demás, creen que son ciudadanos de segunda clase. Y eso es lo que pasa desafortunadamente a muchas jóvenes de color. Así que quiero agradecerles todos por asegurar que eso no suceda a nuestras comunidades. Y espero recibir estas proclamaciones con nuestro gesto sincero de que mantengan el buen trabajo en ambas comunidades. Y por favor, agradezcan a todos los otros consulados generales que no pudieron unirse esta tarde. Muchas gracias, muchas gracias.
Bien, señora fiscal, ahora vamos a centrar nuestra atención en el calendario de consentimiento. Y primero voy a empezar con el abogado de la ciudad, ¿hay algo que reportar en una sesión cerrada, por favor? Is there anything to report at a closed session, please?
Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, we had four closed-session items this evening, and there is no reportable action on any of those items.
All right, so with that, let's focus our attention to the consent counter, and before we begin, I do have a request to speak on item 19F, as in Frank, so why don't we hear that speaker, and then we'll continue with the consent counter. 19F, we have Alfredo Rubalcaba, please come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Pulido, distinguished board member, staff. My name is Alfredo Rubalcaba, I'm the chief external officer for Magnolia Public Schools. We serve over 3,400 students in the greater state of California.
Can you say the school one more time, I missed it.
Magnolia Public Schools, we serve over 3,400 students across the great state of California, but we specifically have our wonderful school here in Santa Ana, Magnolia Science Academy Santa Ana. I am here today to commend the Community Development Agency, also the Santa Ana Police, and the city manager and staff in beginning the process to get the promised zones from the federal government, because we as a school in Santa Ana believe they're very, very important to enriching our students' lives, so I just wanted to thank those entities for getting this work, and I wanted to turn it over to my colleague to speak a little bit about the school.
Go ahead, and I'll note that you submitted a separate, well, separate name, so I don't know if we start the clock again, but please go ahead, Lourdes.
All right, thank you, good evening. My name's Laura Schlotman, and I'm the proud principal of Magnolia Science Academy in Santana. Currently, we're located in Costa Mesa, and we're making the big move for next school year, so in 2016, we're going to open our doors to up to 1,020 students in the city of Santana on Fairview and First Street. We come with a proud track record, we're a STEM school, and we have so many achievements, and one that I'm so proud of is a Title I Achievement Award in 2014. We will be adjacent to the promised zone, and we would love that opportunity to partner with you, and we hope that you consider us. Again, our parents are excited, we are ready to work hard and partner up and do what we promised in our charter, and that is support all of our students, but specifically our low-achieving students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your work, and, you know, we always appreciate folks that are, you know, helping out our youth in particular. So with that, why don't I ask the city council, are there any items you wish to pull on the consent counter? Yes, Councilor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, 19E, 25E, and 25H.
19E, 25E, and 25H. Any other items by council members? Yes, Councilmember Reyna?
19F and 20B.
I'm sorry, Mayor, that was, oops, 25G.
19F, so it's G in addition to H?
No, it wasn't H, it's 25G, didn't understand my own writing.
All right, got it, and Councilor Reyna, did you have one or two items?
19F and 20B.
Any other items? I'd entertain a motion on the balance.
Motion on the balance.
Second. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, let's go to 19E, I think would be the first one.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very, and just very brief, first off, I just, I know to receive and file, just want to thank our chief of police and his staff for doing just a wonderful job. When I sat on the police committee a year or so ago, you know, that was one of our commitments as a committee, and I want to thank, you know, our, our chair, Councilwoman Benavides as well, and the current members that sit on this, holding our staff accountable, making sure that we move forward with this goal, and, and our city manager as well, because I, as we move forward hiring more police officers, our recruitment process is extremely vital in how we get that done, and a lot of things in our city have been very archaic, and as we move forward with technology and marketing, we have to get into the 21st century, and just wanting to thank our staff for that. Personally, I also just want to thank our police chief for the amazing job that he's been doing as of recently, and, you know, when we decided to make Chief Rojas our police chief, it was a tough decision, and, you know, I know there are a lot of things out there in the public with what's going on with community policing. As we move forward, what I can tell you is that we have to have confidence in our police chief and the work that he's doing. The culture that we have had here for far too long, it is changing, and with change, you know, there, there comes growing pains, and we have to understand that, but we have to be supportive of our chief, and I just wanted to tell you, Chief Rojas, that you have my support 100%, and I just want to thank you for the job that you have been doing. I certainly don't agree with, with you 100%, but with that being said, I understand that you're a man of integrity, and you're trying to move Santa Ana, and Santa Ana comes first before anything else, and I thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Why don't you make a motion then?
This item, thank you.
Second.
Would you like to call it Mayor Pro Tem?
Just to, just to echo what, what the councilwoman said, Chief, you know, we're, we know that we're moving in the right direction. Mr. City Manager, how many more officers are we expecting to add on to this, to this great department?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilwoman Mayor, everybody. In the last year, we've added 37 positions with the passage of the, of the 10 that was just awarded with the COPS grant, so we've made major progress.
And hopefully, we're going to come back with even some better news, because I know we're going to be going to Washington to, to go ask for some more support and some more help, and it seems like every time we've gone back and asked for help, we've met, we've been met with some very positive results, so we're hoping that there'll be some additional officers. It's a great department, I'm sure a lot of folks want to, want to work here and, you know, and contribute and be part of our community and part of our great department, so thank you, Chief, for creating that environment. We know it's not easy, we know that we have some great officers here in the rank and file, they're, you know, they've represented the city well, they've represented you well. We, we just know that we have a much bigger nut to crack, and, you know, we, we have more to integrate, and hopefully, we get to the point where we need to, but thank you for that, and I'm very supportive of the motion.
Thank you. With that, I just want to add, Chief, that, you know, I believe the entire city council is behind you 100%. You know, you're doing a good job, just look at the statistics, you know, we're, we're one of the cities that I think is most effective in delivering service and working with the community, and getting ahead of issues and addressing them effectively. So, you know, just, just want you to know that. Additional comment, Councilor Benavides?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. As Councilwoman Martinez mentioned, I'm chair of the Public Safety Committee, and I've had an opportunity to work with a number of colleagues here in, in supporting and working with our police department, specifically our police chief, and some time back, I'd say maybe about a year and a half, two years ago, about a year and a half or so ago, we're noticing that we had quite a few officers, just by the way things had worked out timing-wise, that through attrition, we're, we're leaving our department through retirements. So, we recognized that there was a need for us to be able to expedite the recruiting and hiring process. Our police chief and his command staff worked very diligently to ensure that we were using technology, bringing in additional background investigators just to move that process along, and based on the numbers that the city managers just reported, there has been a clear response, we have a number of other officers, recruits in the queue, going through the backgrounds process, or going through the, the academy, and one of the key things is that for us to be mindful of is the fact that we have hundreds of office, hundreds of applicants that come through for us to be able to identify one solid candidate, because we want to make sure that we have the best of the best here in the city of Santana. Police chief is using technology, not only through the process of recruiting and hiring, but also in, in creating efficiencies, based on the number of officers per, per thousand residents, we're really doing, making miracles happen here in the city of Santana, because we have cities that are the same size that have about twice as many officers out there in the field. So, with that, just want to commend and thank you, Chief, for, for responding to the priorities laid out by, by this council, and as Mayor just mentioned, not only do we have, are we effectively serving this, this size of a city with about half as many officers other cities have, but we also have lower crime rates than those other cities, which is something to be commended, and as a resident here, I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reyna?
Chief, you know, I agree with many of my colleagues, and I'll definitely appreciate your leadership when it comes to technology, and really championing body cameras in a time which surely needed in our community to truly ensure that the safety of the community and our law enforcement officers truly exist, and for your leadership to push that through and to make sure that it becomes to fruition is definitely something that I really appreciate. I think we're moving in the right direction, and thank you for your assistance and service.
So that, Madam Clerk, I believe we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I just want to, before we go on to the next item, on 25B, that one has not been polled, but I just want to note that we have James Speck here, president, Circle Automotive Group, that's the, you know, Volvo Expansion representatives from the auto mall, thank you for being here today. You know, again, your item was not polled, so you're already approved as part of the regular calendar, but I just want to acknowledge your presence, thank you for being here. So with that, 19F, I believe, who pulled that one?
Who here?
Please, go ahead.
Mayor, I just, I don't know, city attorney, Madam City Attorney, whether I need to excuse myself altogether, I'll be recusing myself from this item because my home lies within the proposed designated area.
And it will depend, normally, when you have a consent calendar item, you don't need to leave the dais unless the item's polled, and so if there's going to be a discussion on this item, I'd recommend that you leave.
Well, right now, it was polled.
It was polled, and I'd recommend momentarily.
Okay, please, go ahead.
The reason you're abstaining is because of the proximity to your house?
He has, he owns real property within the designated zone, and if this zone is successful and monies are achieved, there's the possibility that his real property could, could experience some, you know, positive increases, so that's the reason.
And therefore, that's a conflict, so it's better to leave.
So I live there, but the house is under PSN's name, so I'm fine? All right, so anyhow, because it's in my ward, I, I just wanted to make sure that I was involved as we go through, I, I really was involved with the federal empowerment zone, and we saw some great changes there, we definitely saw the growth of some of the nonprofits that existed, and I think there's some great ideas and some great leaders within the community, and I definitely want to be part of that championship, and I wanted to make sure I wasn't in conflict, so thank you so very much for that.
Would you like to move the item?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now I believe it's 20B.
20B is me as well. This is fantastic that we're getting additional dollars for education and safety, I just want to make sure that staff, we include some type of outreach to the school district, obviously, that's where, where all of our children are. I know that we focus a little bit on adult classes, but if we could reach the parents of both, I think that would be beneficial, and with that, I will support the...
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. 25E, I believe that's Councilor Martinez?
No, Mayor, it's 25G and 25H are my next two items.
Got it, I thought it was E and G, go ahead.
No, G and H.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the citywide speed limit study, first off, I just want to thank staff, and I know we're going through the motions here, this is what we have to do, but just keep in mind as we move forward and traffic, and specifically, speed has always been on our radar, and how we reduce speed, and making sure that the consultant that we do go with understands that, and that they work, and, and, and I don't know how we try to figure it out, because it's two different contracts, and what we're trying to do is all in the same, but this is, you know, what we have to do every three or four years, I think it's five, I'm not sure, but just wanting to make sure that we're able to connect the dots as we deal with the Santa Ana Safe Mobility and the reduction of speed in certain areas. You know, as of last night, and just because it's, we're dealing with speed, there, there was a, a crash with a pedestrian, I'm no longer using accidents or incidents, the new terminology that us in the active transportation world now are transforming and are hoping that police departments move from using those terms and start using crashes, we're using the terminology crash now, and, or crashes with pedestrians, and I was told that there was one last night on the corner of Flower and Myrtle of a young man, and the, and the person that was in the car did stop, and I'm not sure what the rationale, I'm not sure, Mr. City Manager, if you were fully aware that we had a crash last night about 10:00 PM? I was Facebooked, you know, all my Facebook friends know that this is a top priority of mine, so they're always informing me what's going on, and they sent that to me last night, and I didn't see anything from our police chief or you, so I'm just wanting to make sure that if we can look into that as we're looking at speed, and if speed was a factor, making sure that we look at that specific area, which is Myrtle and Flower. Flower is a, is, is, you know, I'm not sure how people, you know, navigate through there because it's so narrow, but for whatever reason, they're able to navigate there at much quicker speeds, and wanting to make sure we're able to look at that area, and with that being said, Mr. Mayor, pass the item.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
My final item, Mr. Mayor, is 25H, and I'll, and I'll be very quick, and the reason why I bring this up is graffiti, you know, today, what we're approving is 2.1 million-plus dollars in, and with our contractor graffiti coating, and certainly, they've done a phenomenal job, I think they've been with us now about five years, and, you know, no complaints on my end, they've been able to produce the application, but with that being said, you know, for whatever reason, you know, the cost keeps on going up, and, and, and I'm wanting us to explain, because it is a bill, SB 7, and, you know, and we're, us having to have to pay, you know, certain wages based on legislation at the state of California, and so I have a good memory, and our executive director shaking his head, as we move forward, you know, because we don't get as many updates as we used to, and I know we get this, this monthly report from our city manager about what's occurring, graffiti is at the top of the list, and I think we've done a, a good job at managing it, and with this application now that we have, it is a good tool, but I still want to see how we're able to assess the amount that we're spending with graffiti and then with law enforcement, right? What is that total, that aggregate, because it's more than 2.1 million dollars that we're spending, this is just to remove graffiti, and so I don't know what that full number is, but I, I want to know if it's a 5, 6 million that we're spending a year, and, and what's the return on investment of that, because that, those dollars could be used towards something else, and the community needs to be aware that we are spending a significant amount in just removing graffiti and combating graffiti with our police department, and so that's a lot of money, when we talk about wanting to do all kinds of other things, we have to figure out a way of how we continue to educate, you know, our kids in schools and working with their school district, so that this number goes lower. You know, no matter what we do, you know, for whatever reason, we, I understand graffiti's always going to be an issue, but we need to make sure that we do whatever we can from the educational aspect to reduce that reduction, and so I'm hoping that with graffiti coating, and I know that they do their annual events out in the community with wipeout graffiti, making sure that we're able to do more, and I see, you know, our contractor back there that's done a wonderful job, and just wanting to make sure that we continue to partner with our partners out in the community to do those removal graffiti and, and keeping our kids involved, because, you know, when I, I, I just want to say no, right, because it's 2.1 million-plus dollars, but I understand that we need to do our job, and the contractor's doing his job, and so I just want my colleagues to be cognizant that this is the kind of money that we're spending to remove graffiti, and with that being said, I move the item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any opposition? Motion passes unanimously. So with that, we're on to the next item, and what I'm going to do right now is, I believe, Madam Clerk, we're now on the business counter, I would entertain a motion on item 55A.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 55B, I would entertain a motion.
So move, second.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, a comment, what we're moving here is making an adjustment, you know, and we're going to be hiring one police sergeant plus four police officers, so just wanted to state that for the record, what we're doing with 55B. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, you're very welcome, it's an appropriation adjustment of 725,000-plus dollars.
And, and Mr. Mayor, when I was, when I was commenting earlier, I just had come on the dais, so I thought we were talking about this item.
So all the comments he made earlier?
Right, so all that, let's just put them on to this one as well.
Replay them now.
Thank you.
Replay them?
Thank you.
Got it, thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next item is 65A, and we have some speakers.
We have a, Mayor, we do have a presentation if you want it first, or, or you want to wait for the speakers?
Let's let folks speak, and then let's see the presentation, then let's bring it to council. Rick Niedemeyer, followed by Victoria Perez, and Victoria, if you could please come to the front row, and then followed by Luis Sarmiento from Centro Cultural, and then America... And then America Baracho, but she didn't put who she's with. No, I'm kidding. Latino Health Access. Please go ahead.
Good evening, folks. How are you this evening? Speaking of 65A regarding Dan Young, number two, and I see it's on the agenda tonight to be hopefully approved to change or replace the synthetic turf. I brought this to the, I met with some of the city council folks a couple weeks ago regarding this, and I thought it may be an opportunity to replace number two and number four at the same time to save money, instead of replacing one field now and another field a year later where the labor cost doubles all of a sudden. I see that's on the agenda, so I do appreciate your time coming out and speaking with one of the youth groups. I spoke with some of the adult groups about this, and they're ecstatic about it as well. So thank you for your time.
Rick, before you leave, is Gerardo here? Look, all I want to miss, City Managers, oh, here comes Gerardo. Could you just, Gerardo, do you know what he's talking about? Do you need to meet with him? Can you just give us a comment? I mean, this is a pretty important issue. Go ahead.
We did meet, and we...
Speaking of the mic.
We did meet, and Public Works was there, City Manager was there, Councilmember Benavides was there, followed up, and it turns out that we will be able to put the two projects together. The project he's referring is Field Four. That's already been approved by all of you for funding. It's in the CIP. This is now Field Two, and it will be added if you approve it. And then if it's approved, then those two can be bid out together. And that's what he's saying. It would be smart if you bid it out together, and the answer probably works is that we can do that.
All right. Thank you for indulging me on that. Yes, Rick?
One more quick comment. If we could somehow...
Light's still green, so you can keep talking.
Great.
Just say nice things.
Could we make this a priority? Is it possible? Because otherwise, the estimates I got were a year and a half to have this done. Well, that's a long time.
Oh, now you got Gerardo coming back. Go ahead, Gerardo.
Yes, we talked about that, and I emailed you, Rick, and I mentioned that if it's directed, and I believe that's what's happening, it depends on your vote, right? That everything was going to be so that we can, you can start playing on the new fields. If I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, Public Works, but I remember it was August, August 2016.
Perfect. All right. It's yellow, and you're both done. This is good. That's a new thing, Gerardo, the white beard.
Yeah, it is.
With a smile, he said that, by the way, for folks at home. Victoria, are you here? Please come forward. Luis Sarmiento, America, and then Isabel Becerra after that. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Victoria. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am a Santa Ana resident, but I'm here today representing Community Health Initiative of Orange County. We are also members of the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities, and we're here tonight urging your support for the recommendations submitted, especially for the Santa Ana internship program. So what we're asking for is the allocation of 150,000 of the city surplus funds for youth internship programs. This would give an opportunity to seven part-time interns a year to get trained and certified and enroll families in Santa Ana. We have the potential of reaching an estimate of 3,000 families, and this is important. I'm not sure if you have the map with you with the red zones. It shows that Santa Ana has the highest concentration of uninsured individuals compared to the adjacent cities in Orange County, about 9,000 to 16,000 uninsured in Santa Ana. The overall rate in Orange County is 6.9%, but in Santa Ana, it's 16%, which is more than double the county's rate. And just recently, Governor Brown signed SB 4 into law, which would allow undocumented children to be eligible for health coverage, which will take effect next year, May 2016, and this has a potential in increasing the number of uninsured families here in Santa Ana. I myself have lived here for 16 years and have attended school here. While in college, I realized that it's been very challenging to find opportunities in the healthcare field. So once I became involved with Community Health Initiative, I did my internship. I am now employed there. I've gotten the experience and other interns as well. So I think it'd be a good opportunity for other interns. We have experience working with other cities as well, such as Irvine. Irvine invested to make sure that their uninsured populations had access to healthcare. So if Irvine partnered with Community Health Initiative to cover their 5% uninsured, it'd be great if the city of Santa Ana would do the same for their communities so they can also have access to healthcare enrollments. And, I mean, a paid internship will not only increase the support and interest of students wanting to join the healthcare field, but also help the youth development while assisting the families in need of healthcare enrollment assistance in Santa Ana. And I know this is a brief, but if there are any other questions, we're open to discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Luis, I believe you're next.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for, once again, hearing us and hearing our input as community groups. We want to congratulate staff and want to congratulate the council again on having this surplus and also on some of the things that we've seen itemized on the city's proposal. We're really happy to see some joint use agreements. The proposal on homelessness is really positive. But we do want to just add a few things that we hope that the city will consider. As community groups, last time I was here, I mentioned that the Centro Cultural de Mexico, we're currently trying to purchase a building so that we can have a permanent home here in Santana after having, you know, worked here for 20, more than 20 years. And we've been working in the last few weeks with several other nonprofits to formulate a proposal to you all. And we also made some suggestions as to where maybe the city can reduce some of the other items on the list, like, for example, the 3.8 million that's assigned to the SARDIC strategic improvements. We think that maybe just a little bit of that could be set aside for some of these community proposals. And earlier today, actually, and I just gave to the clerk a small packet, it's a memo where we outline some specific proposals that we want to suggest where maybe some costs could be reduced, and you all can incorporate some of these community proposals. And so I would just suggest that you all, if possible, take a little bit of time to review these things. If it's necessary to take a little bit more time than today to come back to this, then let's do that. What we really want to propose as community groups is to work together so that we're not, I know that in the past that sometimes we've had difficult conversations as to how we want to go forward as a city, and so our proposal in general is that we work together. I know the Centro plays a really important role here in Santana, bringing together the immigrant community, bringing together youth, creating a lot of leaders who many of you recognize have taken a role in all different nonprofit and social roles here in Santana.
Thank you, Luis.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just wrap up, so hopefully that you can take that into account.
Thank you.
Thank you.
America, please, and then Isabel Becerra.
Good evening. I join Luis in congratulating the city for having this surplus, and we welcome the idea of taking care of those areas of the city and the city administration that have been deferred. But I want to call your attention to the fact that there are many, many needs in Santana and that also deserve attention. That is not just the city. As you see the surplus, the city hasn't paid attention to other things that have been happening. This is a city where half of the kids are obese, where we have a major issue of kids that are uninsured, homeless, major issues with after-school, with no preschools, with mental health issues, with violence. And while the city was occupied in many other things and priorities, I guess, the people that have been doing the work for the community have been the nonprofits. And Latino Health Access have been taking a lead on that for 22 years, where the majority of our budget goes to Santana. 70% of the people we serve are from Santana, and 91% of those are low-income. We have brought between 3 and 5 million dollars per year to work with the city, and we purchased a building in downtown. We brought the money from elsewhere, and we were able to build a park with 3.6 million dollars that we also brought. So of course, you know, it's very hard to sustain the building, and today, we are asking to be added as you replace other items that might not be as necessary or meet that criteria of deferred needs, because there are many things here that do not meet that criteria. We request that you assign a million dollars to Latino Health Access to support the payment of the mortgage, to make the building more efficient, to even contribute to the repairs that are due to vandalism in the area. This is a major asset in downtown. This is a major asset for Santana, is an anchor for the wellness corridor. It serves, it provides more than half a million services since its inception, and probably we receive around 10,000 people per month. So I will appreciate the consideration of that request. Thank you so much.
Alfredo Rubalcalva?
Oh, I already spoke. Thank you.
So you're okay?
19F. Sorry about that.
Isabel? Isabel Becerra, is she here? If not, I will now go to staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the city council. We have a short presentation. We have discussed a lot of these items before. Let me start out again with a big thank you to the entire mayor and council, all the city employees, the residents, for your leadership in making a surplus possible. I do want to say this is a one-time surplus for this fiscal year, and what it means is that our general fund revenue exceeded our expenditures by about 10 and a half million dollars, and our expenditures came in budget. So we do have 11,256,540 surplus. As the charter requires, the budget appropriation that's over and above the balances that we achieved does require a two-thirds majority. So anything that's approved today requires, or in the future, a two-thirds majority. If the monies are not allocated, then it would be recommended in the spring as part of the normal budget cycle. I do want to briefly go over the schedule. We began in August. We had individual meetings. We made sure that we had the money, so we did our accrual for our expenses and our revenues. We had a work study in September, additional discussions, more discussions in the last two weeks, communications, and here we are today with a proposed plan and option for the council to make decisions. We do have money in a pie chart for parks. These are to make our parks safe and functional. These are things that should have been done over the last several years that we now have some money to do. We do need to invest in safety and security, technology, invest in Santa Ana, and of course, our facilities and vehicles and technology. I'll give some examples over the next several pages of before and after. The turf fields were mentioned. We went and did an inspection of the fields, and they definitely need to have replacement and repair. The playgrounds need repair. The tennis courts that we have need repair, and you can see some of the before and after in the parks. When we talk about safety and security, we're talking about our sidewalks that need repair to prevent accidents, the body cameras, the lights in the parks. We've had tremendous feedback from the residents that when we add the lighting, they feel safer and the crime goes down. So lighting has been a major request from our residents, of course, our council. We need to invest in technology, in the cloud. Our mainframe systems are outdated. We do have a master plan now. A GIS system is sorely needed in Santa Ana. We need to make improvements to our buildings. We've been many years without replacing vehicles. We also have some HVAC and some other items that need to be taken care of. We need to invest in Santa Ana Sartec. It's the first impression for Santa Ana, especially with the streetcar coming. We've got to make sure our bathrooms are working. We do have some pension liabilities that we want to contribute towards, and there's a nice picture there on page 11 when we talk about place-making, have some place-making in Santa Ana that really makes a good showing for Santa Ana. We have a branding program in here, and we need to have some place-making. So to conclude, Mayor, members of the city council, we have a list of projects which we think is a consensus, but at the end of the day, this is truly the mayor and city council preferences, so you can pick from any of that list. And we also would like for you to establish the fund for these projects, Fund 50, up to 11,250,000. Another item is to consider, which was passed this evening, was funds from the Bristol Street sale property of $2 million. There's a list of projects that could be considered for that. And then finally, the money from the Economic Uncertainty Fund could be loaned to make improvements in the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center, but we're asking to do that after we get our credit analysis done. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Questions, comments? I just have one question, and that is, I know the courts at Cabrillo, which I'm very supportive of, were on the list the previous time, and now they're off the first list, and they're on the second. If we move on the second, how quickly could we move? And is there any thoughts or feedback on that from any of my colleagues or the city manager for that matter? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I just wanted to start by, I didn't just want to address that issue, but I wanted to address the issue as a whole. I think that we have two matrices that were presented to us, and I think the second one is monies that are different than what we're talking about. Again, I think I talked about this at the end of the last meeting that we had, which was, I don't like to call these monies surplus because that's a misnomer. I think it's a, you know, I think all of us should have been a little bit more careful in our terminology. This isn't really surplus funds. I think I'd rather call these unallocated funds. Maybe that should have been allocated, you know, quite a few years back, because we could swallow this money up in work and on issues that should have been addressed years ago. And that's why we have streets and we have sidewalks that are buckling, liability exposure that we deal with almost on a monthly basis. We have people filing actions against us because they're tripping on, you know, badly-designed sidewalks or sidewalks that are failing. So we have that everywhere. There's public safety issues where I know folks from the Sandpoint area have come to me and said, it's just not safe for us to walk at night along our sidewalks because none of them are lit. And so all those things, I think, should have been done before. There's not restrooms at a certain park, or they're just in bad shape. So there's so many needs, and I think that's where the speakers addressed all the needs that we have here in the city. So, you know, if we wanted to even open it up further and talk about our unfunded liabilities on pension, that alone would swallow up this entire money, and we'd need a lot more than that. So I think what we did is we created an expectation from folks that really is, yeah, was beyond what we could provide. And so I think we want to bring it back. I think what staff has done has been a good, strong effort to make us at least try to address some of our more compelling baseline needs, and I think all of us realize that. I think these are two matrices. What I would suggest is that we maybe bifurcate these two and maybe take the first one tonight, and maybe we reconsider B, which addresses, I believe, it's the CDBG-eligible monies and the remnant parcels from Bristol in the amount of $2 million. Maybe segregate that out. Let's talk about the first matrix tonight. Let's get that approved, or at least before us. But I would like us to include the Sandpoint part of, you know, needs that are not mentioned here. I see a lot of other parks. That one certainly is one that needs to be addressed. But, you know, and also on the JPA, as we talk about, you know, as people were talking about the homeless issue, what more basic need is there than to provide somebody a home? I was... I was on my way to court the other day. I was walking through the plaza, the flags that separate the City Council and the city from the Superior Court. There were two little girls that were getting up at seven in the morning, and they were waking up. To me, there's no more compelling need than providing some support to those families, to those people that have very, very basic needs. Unfortunately, those needs have been unmet for years, and they've been unmet by us, they've been unmet by our friends across the street at the Board of Supervisors, who should have really led this issue a long time ago. And I'm very disappointed, as a lot of us leave the City Council, we talk about legacy projects. Look, what better legacy than to address the homeless problem? At least take a chunk out of it. At least leave our mark. At least make this a better life for some of those people who are impacted by this. So, to me, if there's a much, if there's a better argument than that and better use of our funds than to address the homeless problem, I'm certainly willing to listen. But I haven't heard too many, so I would support the way the first matrix is designed again, for us to look at the joint, the JPA renovations, to see if there's anything that could be done to address the homeless problem with those funds as well, and for there to be a bifurcation of both matrices.
One second, then. Thank you. More comment, Councilor Martinez, please.
Yes, Mayor, I just do want to make some quick comment, because it wasn't included in the first round, and I think many of us talked about this, and we just talked about it too, just a while ago, about civic engagement. And it's not included in the first round, and so, as we move forward, I'm not sure where my colleagues are, it didn't even make it on the second round. And in my meetings with our city manager and Mayor Protem Sarmiento, you know, I've said that twice, and it wasn't even included in the second round, and so, of additional monies. We, it's obvious, have talked about this, want this to be a priority. And when I talk about civic engagement, I'm not talking about community engagement, per se, as a whole. I'm talking about voter registration, citizenship fairs, that would take place within city government and be institutionalized and worked through our clerk's office. You know, across this country, as we move forward, government has a responsibility in ensuring that, one, and it's not the elected officials, but that residents who are eligible to participate, that they are getting this information from a reliable source, and that is our own government. And as we move forward, you look at cities like Long Beach, Los Angeles, Chicago. I could go on and on, that they've institutionalized civic engagement within government. I think this is something that we've talked about. I know we received letters from community leaders about this as well, something that I'm passionate about, that I'm speaking across the country in my new role, and the importance of civic engagement. The state of California just allocated 20-plus million dollars to civic engagement across the state of California as we move forward and the importance of voting takes place and wanting to make sure people participate in the democratic process. And so, I'm just wanting to ask my colleagues that when we say that we want to do things, it takes money, it takes dollars, it takes commitment, and I know we can't do everything, but if this is something that we want to do, let's just not say it, but make sure that we are able to follow through. And so, I'm trying to follow through. I'm not sure if it got off all of your radar, or you guys all decided that it is no longer a priority, and I wasn't aware of that, but it's not on the list, and just wanting to highlight that with all of you, because not too long ago, about an hour or so ago, we talked about this. And so, and there's no funding here. Secondly, I just wanted to highlight, you know, and, one, thank our city manager and Robert, not Robert Cortez, Jorge, you know, our assistant for putting this together. This was not easy. It's always a challenge. We need five votes to make all of this come through, and I had conversations in how do we put it together, and where it makes sense, and what's important, and when we're looking at equity, and when we're looking, making sure that it's across the board, and what can we invest in, what can we not invest in. There are a lot of needs in the city that we have today, and, you know, certainly, infrastructure, technology is extremely vital, and I'm definitely supportive. You know, we've always talked about parks and recreation and making sure that our facilities are up to par, certainly supportive. What I want us to keep in mind, and I'm glad that it's on here, the Pension Stability Fund. You know, when we talk about this surplus, whether it's a surplus or not, you know, funds were encumbered or not, look, the money's here, they need to be reallocated because they weren't spent, end of story. This money then just didn't come through thin air, that we all of a sudden now have this money. It was, and I'm not going to, you know, just go over what I've said in the past. What I can tell you here today is that as we move forward, the city needs to be sustainable. We can't, we need to understand what our core services are. We made obligations to our employees, when they retire, that they're going to have a check. Our city manager already gets a check from Phoenix as a retired incoming here, so he understands that, and he expected 26 years of service for that city, that he gets that check. I, too, believe that our employees here in the city of Santana, we made a commitment. There's an unfunded liability of 423-plus million dollars. Nowhere near can this cover this, and we made that commitment. The state of California, you don't even want to know what their unfunded liabilities, or across the street, what their unfunded liability is. And so, when we talk about that we have this money, we want to do all these great things, believe me, I'm in support of what ALHA is saying, I'm in support of what the community is saying, but we need to be realistic. We have to be realistic in what matters and what we need to do to sustain this city. We need to figure that out, because when we have an unfunded liability this big, it should be troubling to the community, because it is a commitment that we cannot go back on. We cannot say we're not going to pay these people their retirement. Guess what? Based on the Constitution of the United States and the state of California, we are mandated to fulfill that obligation, ladies and gentlemen. Just like these teachers, when they retire, they're going to expect their retirement checks. So, that's why I am so passionate, and this is an issue that we need to address. I want to thank my colleagues that it stayed on the list, and so, I'm excited about that, that you all understand the importance of what we're trying to do here as we move forward. And also, you know, one last thing that I do want to make mention is this, is that on the second, on item, and I agree with Mayor Protem Sarmiento, on the second item here, which is B, these are just potential items that we possibly can allocate of the $2 million or so dollars from the Bristol and CDBG fund-eligible projects, something that we should not even be discussing at this point. But what I do want to make very clear is that we have a right to encumber dollars and make sure that these dollars are put somewhere. And so, when, if we do approve Part A of this, this 11-plus million dollars, and within this fiscal year, it does, these projects do not get fulfilled, or us replacing whatever we need to, I'm wanting to make sure that those dollars get reallocated to the items that we asked to be completed, so that next year, when this comes before us, we have a check marked that we can say, "This got done." We made a commitment to the community X, Y, and Z, which is a list of, I don't know, about 30 items here, that those got completed. So, Mr. City Manager, I'm not sure how we do that.
Councilwoman, that's already in the report, exactly your point, the three-year allocation to make sure that when you vote today, those funds can be used only for the items you approved today.
Thank you, and I just want to just make that very clear, and just finally, I just want to state for the record that as we move forward on B, which I don't think we are, because I think there was a first and a second, that this come back to us when the proceeds of Bristol parcels come to us at $2 million, that we may have other projects that we may want to consider beyond this point here, that it come back to all of us, and we have the discussions with you, Mr. City Manager. And I know this goes over the amount of $2 million here that you have listed already, but there may be some other things that the community mentioned that we possibly can have discussions about to further. I think it's two different things that we're talking about, two different pots of money, and so, just want to clarify that, that we still could potentially add additional things to this second list, because the monies have not come before the city yet.
Yes, that's the way I understand the motion.
And as the maker of the motion, that was implicit in my, I didn't articulate it as clearly as I could, but what I guess I wanted to do was make sure, Mr. City Manager and staff, if you could incorporate the councilwoman's request for the civic engagement. I did see that in the first go-around, so let's put that in there for consideration, as well as some of the considerations that were made by building healthy communities for support of the Centro Cultural. All those things, I think, should be discussed. I agree with the councilwoman, they shouldn't be discussed today, because those are monies that aren't, we don't have within our possession. These are expected funds that we feel good about, but, or confident that we'll acquire them, but they are more geared towards the requests that are being made.
We'll add those items to the list, and any other items that you tell me about between now and the time, the sale, the receipt of the monies, and the decisions are made. Thank you, Mayor.
Those are my comments. Now, Ms. Mayor.
All right. Additional thoughts or comments? Councilor Mesquita.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On, I think Matrix A, I think there's consensus from, you know, all of us. I think we need to focus on our basic needs that haven't, all the maintenance that hasn't been done in 10 years, what the basics. So, I'm ready to move on A, but I also agree with Councilmember Martinez that it doesn't make sense to take a look at B if the money isn't there yet.
There's a motion in a second, right, Mr. Mayor?
There is. I just have a question on B, and that is, might that number be greater than $2 million?
Oh, that's far B.
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, it's projected to be $2 million, but we can look at other options, and maybe there's other sales we can do, but when we come back, we'll give you an up-to-date number, and if it's more than $2 million, we'll tell you that.
All right. So, please go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring us back, I think tomorrow, what's today, the 20th, right? Tomorrow's the 21st. You know, the Back to the Future movie, they went back to 2015. I'm still hoping the Cubs make it through, so we can have something there. But I have to bring us back, you know, we go to the future, I got to bring us back, and historically, I just sit here for a second and really think about something, because it was this city council, I wish I could include the mayor, but it was, but I can't, but it was this city council that about three years ago, two and a half years, three years ago, made a decision to make a change in the way we do things in the city. We structurally completely changed the people that are sitting in our departments, our city manager, and I remember there was a time where we were being criticized as not knowing what we were doing. And here we are with more money now to be able to do that. Our employees feel better, because they know that they're going, there's longevity here. If you come to Santana, you can expect to work here for a great, you know, the rest of your life if you want to, because we have stability. And that stability came from the members of this council. When we took those hard votes, when this chamber was up here, and I remember this lady came up saying, I know the editor of 60 Minutes, I know the person, and I was like, "Bring it on, bring it," because when you know you're on the right track, and you know you're doing the thing, you're working for the city, not for yourself, that good things are going to happen. And I think that's what's happening with our staff. Our city manager said, "Here's the money we have, we're going to cut it in half. Half of it goes to our employees, half of it goes into our infrastructure." And this is what we're doing now. This is good governance. And so, I applaud the council for having the courage in spite of all of the movement that was happening, which was the wrong movement, because we're in a better state today. But I also want to thank our employees. I want to thank our police officers, because everyone bought into that form of government and said, "Okay, thank you for giving us our share. We are happy. Let's continue and move forward." And now, the community is saying, "Thank you for giving us this back to the community." Councilmember Martinez is absolutely right. Do we have the ability to fix everything tonight? The answer is no, but my goodness, we've made a tremendous step in the right direction. So, I just wanted to thank everyone. I think it's a moment to celebrate as we move forward. And for those that didn't get what they needed this time around, we're going to continue to work diligently, so that we continue to have this type of, we continue to prosper in this fashion, so that we can continue to meet those needs in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any additional comment? Councilman Benavides?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I think the way that the vote will very likely go tonight is the council doing the responsible thing. You know, we have, a couple months ago, we got together, had a study session at the Police Community Room, and we had been communicated that we would have about $10 to $12 million, roughly, to be able to allocate and look at allocating towards projects or efforts that had not yet been identified. And so, at that point, I think most of us, I know I came in very hopeful, we're going to be able to allocate towards new projects, do one-time improvements, investments, expansions, new parks, or new public art, or new, a lot of new, bring a lot of new assets and investments into our community. Prior to our meeting, we saw about over $60 million of deferred maintenance, of things that over the last decade have not been taken care of. Broken swings, it's air conditioning systems that don't work in our community centers, it's sidewalks that are uneven, lighting that doesn't work, sports fields that are completely in disrepair. And so, I think tonight, we're doing the right thing, although it's not as exciting to just fix things that are broken. There are a couple of items that were not in this current list that's being recommended that had previously been discussed, some that did make it on List B. And one of the things that I just want to encourage us to consider as we look at List B is, again, to be reminded that these are one-time funds that we can invest, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to create some new opportunities for residents, for our community. Parks and recreation is an area that has been, that we realize we've underfunded, and our youth, that's often times we talk about our youth, our young people, and needs for opportunities for them. And so, even though deferred maintenance is important, and it's a good thing to be able to take care of, you know, we'll have fixed playgrounds and such, I'm thinking about our teenagers, our young people, that I'm hopeful that we will look towards the future and invest in them. One of the items that I've shared before is the skate parks that create. We talk about health, we talk about obesity, we talk about needs for health and fitness, and for, we lose far too many teenagers in the city of Santana. Far too many kids end up getting wrapped up in the negative influence of the streets, that there are far too many gangs that are recruiting our kids, far too many tagging crews, and many other things. And we have those kids who take a board and some wheels and are out there trying to do, just having fun in a healthy, safe way. And so, I would hope that we would look at creating, we have a skate park right now that is quite overly utilized over at Centennial. Just last week, I was approached, I think they reached out to all of us via email, there's a group that is looking at creating some space within the city of Santana to be able to serve our young people, our teenagers specifically, that are the growing interest in skateboarding. Right now, they take about 80 young people over to Fountain Valley, where there's a church that opened up their space there, their parking lot for skateboarding, and I would hope that we would be able to have more spaces here in Santana, so that our kids can stay here in a place that's safe and that's positive, and that's for them. So, just something for us to consider, along with, and there are, again, so many needs and so many opportunities, there are lists that we were just provided by way of a memo, again, looking at investing into infrastructure and our own community, our own families, our own young people. Another, several other recommendations that members of the council made here tonight that I think we should consider as well, but just wanted to put that out there as food for thought. And a question I do have for the city manager, tonight we voted on that surplus property, I believe, right, that is set at about $2 million. And am I understanding right in that it was purchased with CDBG funds, and those funds will be basically, with sale of property, will be made available for?
Yes.
Is that the way that's?
That's correct. We don't have the money yet, but in the future, we think we're going to get it.
Okay. So, it looks like right now, we're probably going to be limited to about that amount. Again, I'm hopeful we'll be able to, be able to point something tangible. It's good to have HVAC systems, cool air, and it's good to have IT system that works, but it'd be nice to be able to say, "Hey, kids, we did this for you with one-time funds that came into the city." So, that, with that, I'll be.
Councilor Roman Reyna, please.
Sure. You know, I second the motion, and for me, sitting here for three, four, almost four years, it's exciting in the fact that we're investing back into our infrastructure. This is the foundation and the engine that makes the city go. For so many years, we've deferred maintenance, and we deferred it, we deferred it, we deferred it. For us to be in a situation where we have a little bit of extra dollars, because of the leadership that we've had, because of the dice and the council decisions that we've made, we have a little bit of extra funds to replace all the things that we didn't replace over the last 10 years. And it is challenging. And it is challenging, because we almost look at it as verbiage that we mentioned earlier, it's a surplus, oh, great, we got extra dollars. We're 60 million dollars when it comes to deferred maintenance in the whole, 60 million. When your house is falling apart, you don't buy a jacuzzi. You fix it, you invest back into your household. I'm excited that we're building, reinvesting into our infrastructure, I'm excited that we have new things coming in, and I'm excited the fact that I was able to motion and be at this dice when we're investing so much money into our city. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just back to the question that I asked, 'cause I didn't get an answer, it was on the first list, I'm talking about the two courts at Cabrillo, now it's on the second page. Any thoughts on that? Please, Ms. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We did look at that, and those are new clay court tennis courts, and when we looked at the needs of the city for existing tennis courts that hadn't been done, the theory would be that we would fix the ones we have before we funded or recommended funding for new ones. There is a court, as you know, that's gonna be repaired at Cabrillo, there's one at Windsor, but that is on the list for the future.
Yeah, so we got that, and then we got the six at Windsor, and I just wanna remind the council, 'cause this'll come back, we'll have an opportunity, those two courts there have been vacant, I don't know how long, maybe 40 years or so. So just as we look at that, look at one-time things, we're gonna get one more crack. So let's just please keep that in mind. And with that, I'd call for the question. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, there's a couple other items that are associated with that. One item is to establish the fund, as was noted by the councilwoman, so we need a motion on that.
So moved.
Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And the last item is, and I think we had support for it, was to go ahead and recommend the use of the Uncertainty Fund for Sartec at 3.8 million, but only after the credit analysis is done.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I could request something to be called out of order, I know that we have our consulate general here that wanted to make a brief comment.
Is he here as a consul? Could you please step forward?
He is, and I think he's got some friends with him as well, but he's got the three minutes to maybe.
Please go ahead. Zek Kora Jackson, welcome, Kora.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here this time as the Bolivian consulate, now representing the entire Latin American consulate community, to invite, we're having a screening of a Bolivian film on the 6th OC Film Fiesta that will be held at the Frida Cinema. It's called Olvidados. And why am I making this important, the importance of this movie? It's because we, as a people, as a nation, and as a country, we should not forget the past, we should always have it present. During the decade of the 60s, the 70s, they were very turbulent times, and this movie represents all the abuses that were committed by certain members of different communities in certain countries. This movie represents how children were taken away from their parents, how they were taken, not, parents not knowing what happened to them, and we consider that this movie should be seen by everyone, so we should not forget the past and always have presence, so those abuses shall never be committed again. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you for that.
There's a question here, please go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Consul, I was just curious as to when the film will be, when and where the film will be.
Yes, it'll be held on the Saturday, October 24th, at 7:00 PM.
Can you give us the address again, please?
It's 305 East Fourth Street, Santa Ana, California, 92701.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can, maybe just aggregate a little bit more and supplement what the consulate general is saying. The Film Fiesta, which was, I think it's concluding, tagged on this movie because it had premiered in Los Angeles, and we thought, you know, look, we have a lot of people in Orange County that would love to see it, and I suggested that they maybe speak with the organizers of the Film Fiesta, so they've agreed to have to show it at the Frida Theater on Fourth Street, and it's gonna premiere this Saturday, I think we'll have the producer with us as well. It's made with, you know, producers and actors from Argentina and Mexico and Bolivia, and it's a great film. I haven't seen it, but I'm looking forward to seeing it. We just wanted to be supportive, because we know what a success the Film Fiesta has been, and to add one more quality, you know, film is a great thing. So this is like a bonus film, but it made it, you know, right alongside, because Los Angeles is its own market, but Orange County and Santa Ana, I think, has a market that can do just as well. So I thank all three of you, 'cause I know Victor Bayan with Film Fiesta, Kora Jackson, who's been active in the community, and the consulate general, the three of you I know are gonna be present there hopefully, and we're gonna just invite the entire community to come and have a great time. It's a family film, it's something that we can all enjoy and appreciate, good cinema. And as we were talking about, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month, Latin American Day, what better way to celebrate that than good art? And I think that's, I think that's we're all supportive of here in Santa Ana, so thank the three of you for coming here and making that pitch. And we'll make sure, Mr. City Manager, if maybe we can, you know, send something through our communications director, invite everybody in the city to come and join us, it'd be great. I know I attended the Film Fiesta over the past couple of weeks, we saw full seats, the theaters were busy, people were enjoying good films, good family films. There was music, there was food, there was, you know, smiling faces, so we, you know, we wanted to continue it one more weekend, so thank you all for being helpful.
And the director will also answer questions during, after the filming.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Congratulations and good work. Thank you. With that, I think we have one short public hearing, then I wanna call on some public comments from speakers. Item 75A, this time a place for a public hearing, you consider approving an emergency ordinance, extending moratorium on the establishment or expansion of any short-term residential use for an additional 10 months and 15 days. So with that, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, and first, let's hear from members of the audience, Douglas McLeith, followed by Julie Herrick, and after that, Madeline Please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak, and let me express my thanks to all of you for your service to Santa Ana. I'm very pleased with what I see happening in Santa Ana. When I was here on September 15th, I had expressed to you my positive experience with Airbnb, I was 100% positive, and how I had not experienced any troubles whatsoever, and certainly not the things that are listed as the findings of the council in the ordinance with respect to noise, trash, nuisances. None of that has occurred in my experience. And I won't bore you with my personal story again, but I just wanted to come to express how I think the council would be going too far in passing this ordinance, it'd be too broad. When I was listening to the story of the two girls out here in the plaza that Mr. Sarmiento was relating to, I was thinking how there's troubles that people have, and they go along a broad spectrum. And the council may be, by going too broad, affecting people that are not harming their neighbors, are not presenting a nuisance, but have hard times, and being able to have short-term residence is something that is beneficial for them. With respect to this ordinance, I would say that this would be comparable to perhaps, if you wanted to restrict somebody that was having dog fights in their backyard, you wouldn't pass an ordinance that would prevent Edith from down the street from having her pet poodle. I think I can understand what the council is interested in doing, and I would just, again, direct it to the San Jose ordinance. And note that an ordinance like this can be restricted to certain things, and for instance, if somebody is a host and they're having somebody stay in a room in their home, or in a unit in the back of their home, and there's only two or three people, that none of the things that the council is concerned with are presented. There wouldn't be traffic problems or any of the things that are listed in the ordinance, and so I think it would be too broad. So I would just request that the council be measured and wise, and perhaps, I don't know what the procedure would be, but make a motion that this would be an ordinance to restrict short-term residence rentals, that's more than two people, or that's at a place where the actual owner is not present, and is not measuring what's going on, and basically pare this down to something so that it's not hurting innocent people that are not presenting anything bad to the community. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Joy?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. I just wanted to share my story of being an Airbnb host, so you guys have another voice and perspective on how your residents experience it. And I want you to, urge you to protect home sharing in Santa Ana. I've been an Airbnb host for the past three years, hosting guests in a spare bedroom in my home. I have an overwhelmingly positive experience with my guests. I've met people from all over the world, I've been able to provide them with a comfortable space at an affordable price, and I've enjoyed just the social benefits of meeting people from all over the world. I've never received a single complaint about noise or parking from my neighbors, and I've always been respectful of the parking rules in my neighborhood. I liked what the previous gentleman said about, like, in my situation, I am there with my guests, and I generally have one or two guests at the most, and so I do agree with what he said about this being overreaching for affecting hosts like myself when we're not the ones that are really the problem. But even for hosts that are renting out their whole unit, I think there's a great many of those who are also not a problem. And I know that you guys need some time to look into this and to learn about it. I would hope that 45 days might be enough. If you do need more time, I would just urge you to act quickly and make decisions that will clarify the regulations so that the sharing economy can thrive. I would hope that you guys would see the benefit of having guests in Santa Ana. The majority of my guests are travelers from nearby and from all over the world, tourists, business travelers. I have a lot of medical residents on rotation at local hospitals, family members visiting their family, and new residents moving to the area who need a temporary place to land while they seek permanent housing. None of, and I just want you guys to understand, like, the scope of that, so it's not just all people come in to try to have a big party or whatever, it's really a wide cross-section of people. And so, I just urge you to protect home sharing. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final speaker, Madeline, Madeline Spencer.
Hey, Madeline, could I take your three minutes?
Good evening, council and city staff. Just to bring up something about Airbnb, I was just at a meeting in San Francisco and cities all over the country. Philadelphia was saved because they didn't have enough hotel rooms, and they were able to get 30,000 people to get guests in that. Just to add that to you guys' perspective, it's one of the disruptive technologies that's taking over right now, and you guys don't have a lot of hotels either. So I'm actually here tonight to speak to the POA, and I know that they're not in the room, but I'm going to speak to them anyway. With sweeping sentiments across the nation.
But, Madeline, this is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, and it's speaking to them. With sweeping sentiment across the nation.
I mean, I'm happy for you to speak, but I don't know that we can.
This is focused on this particular item, correct, Sonia?
Oh, okay. This is not public comment right now.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We're holding a public hearing on a specific item.
Okay.
Save your comments. Mayor Protem did a good job earlier today doing that, he did a speech, then he re-up, you can do the same thing, just save your energy.
I'll come back.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor. So I'm gonna, I'm now gonna ask the staff, have any brief presentation? If not, I think we know the issue. So with that, let me close the public hearing. I know staff is available for comment. Councilor Martinez.
Mr. Mayor, you know, my intent when I brought this item up, and I've sent various emails to our staff, I'm in full support of the shared economy. I don't, you know, I've said that from the day one. As of last week, I just sent our planning staff and our city manager an article about the shared economy and how government is utilizing the shared economy with Uber, with Lyft, with Airbnb, and other modes. So I'm a huge supporter of the shared economy, and so, you know, I want our director to come up here and really explain, because I know when Mayor Protem Sarmiento brought the issue up about the shared economy in Airbnb, that there were some particular issues, but I don't think to this extent, you know, and certainly, my goal is not to be restrictive, prohibitive, and overreaching. And so, if you could please explain to us, Mr. Director, one, what this emergency ordinance is, and why you're extending it, and what we can do to assure the public and our residents that this is not what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Yes, what we intend to do is to, we are looking at several different models, several different cities. Each city has developed their own version of regulating these based on their specific needs. The cities that have a huge tourist population, for example, have very different perspective than we would in this particular case. So we would like to spend the time and bring you some options for what would then constitute the best option for Santa Ana, and within that, we will have several options that would allow people to have short-term rentals and with various conditions on their property. That said, if the council is amenable, you would, we could, we could add a clause, and the city attorney could correct me, or to put the exact boarding of this, that you could extend the moratorium, or, and with some conditions, you could exempt properties where the property owner is on site and managing the renters, that could be, they could be exempted from them, or you could ask us to withhold any kind of enforcement unless there is evidence of disturbance. So, in other words, we would not proactively go look for people and find them unless there is a complaint, and we researched a complaint, and it's based on real issues that have taken place. We could do any of the above, per council direction, we can work with you.
Quick question for you.
Yes.
You're asking for 10 months, that seems like a very long time. Would it be faster to send it to a committee?
We could, we could take it to the committee, and so, I don't know if that'll speed it up, but we don't intend to take the full 10 months. We asked for 10 months because our same staff is working on the zoning code update and the child plan update. That was really the only reason, but we don't intend to take the full 10 months.
Councilor Martinez, you still have the floor, but go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I think we're on the same page, so go ahead.
Yeah, I think so, and thank you, Mr. Director. You know, I think what triggered this was we had somebody come to us about a home that was overrun, not really one of these, you know, Airbnb models, but it was just somebody who was having almost a frat party-type home, where you had a lot of people renting rooms, and it was noisy, and there was a lot of traffic, and so, do we have an update on that? What's the status of that property?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My understanding is that that went through a process, but the individual that has that home is now selling it?
Right.
And no longer in the business that we've talked about.
So I think all of us, in our zest to be responsive and sensitive to that, you know, homeowner, we said, well, let's stop this all, and I think maybe what we need to do is maybe pause, and I think to the council members, you know, point, I am supportive of the, you know, the whole concept of a shared economy. In fact, in our development subcommittee, we were talking about amending some of our ordinances with respect to housing and standards, and how we can use and be creative about increasing our properties and being able to use granny flats or an additional home in the back, so we can have more sustainable, you know, living for our families. Yeah, and have more housing opportunities, and we just don't have that, and we can't build our way out of it, but maybe there's a way we can, you know, zone our way out, at least alleviate some of the compression and impaction we're having with housing by doing some creative zoning. But I think that this would be in conflict with that, that's my opinion. So what I would say is either we defer it, we take it off calendar, maybe you can continue with some of the options that you're talking about, bring it back to us, and maybe we do it that way. But I'd hate for us to be punitive on people that have this without having some of the unintended consequences, so that would be my recommendation.
I think we should just.
I agree. Go ahead. Do you wanna speak, Councilor Mesquita? Go ahead.
Yeah, if, you know, if there's problems, send code enforcement out there. If we don't hear from anybody, I mean, then do we really have to go after anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I still want us to evaluate this, so maybe it is, maybe we take this off calendar, and we take it to committee, to our development. and we take it to committee, to our Development Transportation Committee, and you can provide us our options there, because we do need to address the shared economy. Our ordinances and resolutions that are in place right now are very archaic. They're not into the 21st century. There's lots of changes that we need to make, and you're not in your head, Mr. Director. And so I think this is a good one, as we move forward with supporting the shared economy. Maybe we could have more dialogue and be more creative in having these discussions. You're bringing forward to us the granny flats, that's one great example of, you know, producing more housing for our residents, you know. So I would like to, one, remove this from calendar, take it to the Transportation and Development Committee, and have you still provide us the options, and see what we can do to move forward in the next six to 10 months.
Second.
But let me ask a question. Would you therefore say, let's just not have the moratorium in the interim?
I think that's...
Yes.
I think that would be better.
Yes, yes.
Just don't have the moratorium.
Correct, that's what I'm, yes, Mr. Mayor.
So as long as that's very clear in the motion. Yes?
And just to reinforce that as a recommendation, a lot of these reservations are made six months in advance, and then you're gonna get into people making an arrangement that's not even legal, and there's liability, so I definitely think we should not have the moratorium if we're...
Good. So the motion is not to have the moratorium, send it to committee, obviously keep working on it, but with, so the extension of the moratorium ends basically today.
Correct.
All right.
Second.
As of tonight, is there a vote to lift the moratorium tonight, then?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm suggesting. It ends tonight, no more moratorium.
Because you're not extending it, it's gonna end. I just want, yeah, to let you know that at this point, it would turn into a zoning issue that would be handled as we would any other rezoning.
Correct, without a moratorium.
And with the council's permission, then we will put it on the zoning code update program, and we'll get to it along with every other...
That's a better approach.
Makes sense.
It's a better approach. Wait a minute, I have more comment. Councilor Ben Aviles, please.
Just a question for clarification, and I do think that in an effort to fix one issue, I think we did, maybe over, we're looking at potential over-correcting here tonight and impacting a lot of, a lot of folks. Some of the speakers that came tonight had some very good points. The gentleman spoke last time as well, but I do have a question, just from a legal standpoint for city attorney. We imposed an emergency moratorium that only lasts, is only in effect for a limited amount of time, if I'm correct, right? And then we either have the option of extending, or it goes away. Is it, are we at this point pressed at a, do we have a certain window to act on this?
Time to act, okay. So you adopted the emergency moratorium for 45 days, and that moratorium is effective through October 30th. Okay, what was on your agenda tonight was to extend that from November 1st for a period of 10 months and 15 days. That's what was on your agenda. If you don't take action tonight, then that moratorium's going to expire on October 30th. Under the government code, you would not be able to ever, ever again adopt a moratorium on this issue. So what you would be, so as long as you know that, it would be referred to be put on the new zoning program that the director referred to, and it would be handled like any other zoning amendment.
Okay. So on the other, our only options would be to address this to either extend, to decide to extend, or goes away, and we cannot...
Right.
...address it through mor, address this matter through a moratorium.
It was just a temporary timeout. We took a temporary timeout because it looked like it might or could have been a big issue. I think what you're hearing now is staff can address this issue through its regular zoning processes, and so if you decide that the moratorium is no longer needed, then you just don't take any action, and it expires on its own terms, it just goes away.
Thanks for that clarification.
All right. So with that, I think we were pretty clear. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those ayes. Motion carries unanimously. So with that, I have a few public comments. If we can have a translator come down?
We have work study.
Do you wanna do, I have some additional speakers that still haven't spoken. Do you wanna do them after work study? We can...
Is the work study still part of...
All right, let's do work study, then. We, I mean, it's not like nobody's been able to speak. We have had quite a bit of input from different folks on different items. So I'll turn, turn it over to Ms. City Manager, then.
Thank you, Mayor Alvaro Nunez, who's gonna give an update as it relates to vendor, mobile vending.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Before, Mr. City Manager, before he starts his presentation, I know this was provided to us, I think we understand, and I think the public understands, some of the issues that we face with the vending trucks. So if Mr. Nunez can go directly to some, to the proposed modifications to the ordinance, I think that's what we, as a council, have been looking for. So if you could go to those slides, Mr. Nunez, it'd be greatly appreciated, because we already know the history and the context of all this for the past nine years.
Copy that.
Thank you.
Copy that. Let me just get to the, where is it here?
The Weston Chase.
Slide show.
Yeah.
Okay, so go to number two, which is the key point. As far as the process where we're at, we know the history. The key recommendation at this point is to rescind the ordinance based on the federal code injunction. So we have been enforcing it, we just need to now officially ask, get the rest from the city council, as the city attorney to rescind. Update the regulations to reflect current industry practices. Eliminate our outdated provisions. Distinguish between commercial and residential zones. And obviously, you know, take into consideration what the public has indicated as concerns. Establish key areas where we can step, allow for multiple mobile vendors, and also compare with other cities. Part of the key points that we did have, we did meet with the stakeholders, representative both from the produce, catering trucks, Latino health access was invited, some of the South Main merchants as key members, also the South Main and downtown folks, and obviously members from the produce association, and key points of the catering trucks. So let's go to the recommendations. Just a quick oversight, some of the key points, obviously dealt with parking, overconsultations, health concerns in the neighborhoods. So part of the recommendation to address some of the public health concerns is to adopt some of the commensary sanitation bathroom requirements that are already accepted statewide. This is something that the county already requires, both produce vendors and catering trucks, the hot vendors accept it as part of the requisites. For us, not so much to codify or make the city county health inspectors, but to make us help resource, as resources to county health. So we add language to the municipal code that would say, you know, failure to adhere to establish statewide, not just countywide, statewide commensary and sanitation requirements. The key with the bathroom requirements, just to make a note, is that produce vendors, catering truck vendors are required to move every hour if they can't have, don't have access to an approved, and that's county health-approved bathroom requirement. And again, that's not, that's just in the county, that's part of the California Retail Food Code in the state. Some of the key points regarding the neighborhoods, you know, proximity to schools, and impose a limitation or distance requirement, 500 feet from school, park, or community centers, distance requirements from crosswalks, distance, sex, height limitations from access to intersections, and also no blocking of driveways, and this includes both residential districts and commercial zones. Key items, prohibited items on the public right-of-way, obviously require the containers, previous containers, and the vendors to clean within 50 radius, and this is typical in other cities. Some of the key cities that we looked at, and it's part of your power presentation, 15 cities, both local and outside the state, Phoenix, Portland, Baltimore, Chicago, those are the key points. Amplify the music and establish hours of operation in residential zones and uses, not just districts. For the mobile food vending courts, this for commercial zones, similar to Chicago, Baltimore, San Diego, San Jose, Portland, they establish this private-public property joint uses, right? So with a special event permit, you use it to enliven and enhance, bring, increase business activity, and generate traffic for existing businesses in certain areas. For the city of San Ana, something, for example, the downtown area, the train stations, an example, San Ana Zoo, Eddie West, Main and Warner, key examples where you have some type of use, and you still have the activity, but it's not exactly established within both private-public use. We would close some of the streets, as an example, and allow some of the businesses to get a permit.
Alvaro, a quick question, just on this, so commercial use, would school districts, what are they considered? Are they considered residential? What are they considered?
Actually, they can consider an independent zone. They're not, they're not exactly by, by the city of San Ana, except for special land use certificates.
And I only ask that because a lot of our school districts are moving towards this and having these specialty trucks, food trucks, come to the school sites and wanting to do that, and, you know, I'm wanting to make sure that we're able to partner up with the school district, so when they do that, that they don't get fined if we move in this direction, this new direction, that schools are included. I know they have their own zoning, but, you know, still, issues still arise, as you're asking us, not within 500 feet within a school limit or church, et cetera. That may be counterintuitive to them wanting to get a permit to have all these specialty food trucks come out during special events.
The question, the school districts, actually, we do not control what happens on the school property, but on the public right-of-way, we do. So if the concern is to address, to get in communication with the schools, to regulate the public right-of-way around the schools, we can do that.
Well, it's more to allow it. Right now, we don't allow within 500 feet ice cream trucks to stuff. If we move forward, say, amending some of these commercial zones to allow for these specialty trucks, wanting to make sure that the school districts are not prohibited when they're using the public right-of-way, one example is Siggestrom High School.
Right.
You know, it's within a residential area, they may want to use some of the public right-of-way. You know, right now, you can't have any of these trucks within 500 feet within the school. Don't want the police department to cite them if we then do allow it citywide. It's what I'm trying to...
Well, that would be part of the proposal.
Okay.
That's the objective when we say private-public. We're talking about not just property owned by the city, but even, for example, closing the street.
The school district.
So we would close some of that access, for example.
Okay.
If the idea is to include, for lack of a better example, let's say here, Willard, and there's some partnership with the school district, we would control the public right-of-way, access to the street, that type of aspect.
Okay, great.
And again, the idea would be, you know, so that we can have hours of operation, right? The proximity to similar brick-and-mortar businesses so that people don't complain that they're being adversely impacted.
Because what do we do when the YMCA was having these, these food truck, I know they had an event, I went to it.
They got a land use certificate, a special land use certificate.
Right, so they got a special land use certificate.
And the idea is to expand that, then also to include some of the street, for example.
Okay, and that's just an example, because they came to me and they said, hey, are we gonna get in trouble?
Right.
Like, you know, hey, right now, we're not, you know, regulating this to the full max, but we're looking at changing it to be flexible, you know, because they're raising money, so wanting to make sure that Boys and Girls Club school districts are all eligible, because they're now using that to raise dollars.
We do have something in the zoning requirement already, like the land use certificate. The idea at this point would be to especially set aside specific districts and allow for a mixed use, not just on their private property, when we say, or privately owned, also by the city, by private entities, but also mainly like the street, for example.
Yeah, because like High School of the Arts, they really don't have a cafeteria. They bring in these food trucks for these kids right now.
Right.
You know, we're not doing anything, but if it does change, whole different uses come into play, wanting to allow that, because they don't have food, right? And it's a cool thing to do, and so, again, just wanting to make sure that we cover all our bases.
Perfect example. And again, we'll do the hours of operation, the proximity to Main Street versus Sycamore as an example, proximity to similar properties or businesses, and again, duration, you know, how long, how often, when, during the week, that type of examples.
Okay, great.
That's the key. And again, similar as used in Chicago, Portland, San Diego, San Jose, nothing out of the norm, let's put it that way.
And just, because this is a dialogue, the study session, and if the city council decides to move forward with these commercial zones and establishing these districts, Ms. Madam City Attorney, and maybe Mr. Planning Director, like in Portland and other places, they have, they distinguish these districts by lining the public right-of-way, they're green, orange of operations, and having signage, and wanting to make sure that that's all a part of this, because it doesn't say it, and I'm assuming it's a part of it, I'm just wanting to make it clear for the public that they understand that we are going to have rules and regulations and indications of when you could actually do this for special permits or whatever, have you during the day, for example, at the High School of the Arts, between, you know, 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, you're allowed, or they have a special event in the evening and want to bring that, you then get a special permit, and you have it from 6:00 to midnight, et cetera. If that's the direction that we're trying to go in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just, any more questions on that specific point? I just wanted to ask one, and then I'll go to Councilor Mescola. Like at Santa Ana College, you know, sometimes they have events, and I know they want extra vehicles, sometimes it's on the public right-of-way, potentially along like Washington, maybe, or English Street, or whatever. To Councilmember Martinez's point, would this allow the flexibility for that to be there?
Yes.
Okay.
Or even a neighborhood, like Wilshire.
Well, go ahead, why don't you speak up?
And, Mr. Mayor, and even like in a neighborhood, for example, like Wilshire Square, they have their concerts, and they brought food trucks.
Yes.
Right, so I'm wanting to, there's so many examples that we can give, and it's not that we're disputing or disagree, I think it's important and that we're supportive, but we need to keep in mind that there are various uses, and I know our city attorney wants to make a statement, Ms. City Attorney.
I'm just saying, I mean, we're getting your feedback, because it is a workshop, and what I'm hearing is that you want to make sure that these regulations that we put into place are not going to interfere with special events requests for some of our other public agencies.
Correct.
We can draft that. We can say, these regulations shall not apply to a public agency or a neighborhood that has given us notice in advance that they're having a special event. They can make it as part of their special event permit, so that's...
Well, but what I'm hearing, more than a special event, at OSHA, for example, every day's a special event, meaning there's kids that come out, and they like to, you know, frequent the trucks that are nearby, and they don't have enough food on campus, there aren't a lot of restaurants, kid can't walk several streets, and so, you know, going across the street or whatever, it...
One of the things we'll have to balance, Mayor...
It's not a special event.
Right, not a special event, and those are, this is why we need your feedback. But one of the things we do need to be very careful about is what we've heard from individual council members and what we've seen in the record, is the city also does not want to create a situation where we're competing with other brick-and-mortar restaurants and other commercial areas.
And it's a balancing act.
And we need to be very careful about how we regulate in those commercial zones, so we, that's something we'll have to work on, and we may have to balance that. We may come back to you and say, look, in order to protect the existing restaurants that you have, we may not be able to be as free as we want to be in certain other areas that are zoned commercial. And that's where I need to work, we'll need to work very closely with the planning staff on those zones. We won't be able to discriminate. If we're going to say we're gonna have stricter regulations in a commercial zone to protect those restaurants, then that means we're gonna have to do it across the board. And so you'll, we'll come back to you, and you'll get to make the policy decisions on what, you know, ultimately, we can make recommendations, but you'll have to tell us what you want to balance.
Councilmember Mescola?
Yeah, I think I got one of my questions answered, but I, on the public health concerns, what does the daily reporting consist of?
They're required by the California Retail Food Court to actually go every night, or at least replace their items, their, some of them are required to have hot water, for example. So they have to, we have to maintain and remove it.
Okay. And then the sanitation and bathroom requirements, how are they gonna meet that? You know, how does a food truck meet that?
They're supposed to have, I mean, that, again, this is not a new requirement. This strictly county health has to approve it, and they have to enforce. The reality is, they have to have an approved kind of notification from approved inspected bathroom requirement, to have a notice.
They can also provide portable, and, for example, if you do corrals of these food trucks, then there's a truck that has portable bathrooms.
Okay, thank you.
But just to clarify, there'll be a distinction between the ones that are in this type of commercial centralized food courts, and then the ones that are on the street, as an example, right? Without part of this example.
Councilmember Rain, I believe, has a question.
I just want to think that I didn't see in your presentation, that is a concern for a lot of the residents, is, I don't know if you want to call it, light pollution, or light, some of them are right next to homes that are putting a spotlight into theirs. So I didn't see that in here. I hope you consider...
Yes.
Including that aspect of it as well.
And we can just look at the California Vehicle Code, and just require only what's allowed per the vehicle code, and that's fine.
Thank you.
Now, I believe Mayor Protem had a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think I have more questions than answers, unfortunately, on this one, because every time we start talking about it, we realize that, we tried this before, I think, before we all came on the council, I think the mayor and the council back then tried to address it, very tricky, very complex. I think we were sent back with our tail between our legs by a federal district court judge that, you know, placed an injunction on the ordinance that we tried, that was adopted. So, you know, TPM, time, place, manner restrictions are very difficult on some of these, you know, we can't do, we realize there's issues of public safety, blight, you know, just a lot of other secondary unintended impacts. The only thing I would mention as we navigate this through, again, is, you know, let's try to be creative on this one. I think now, there's been a maturity of these, you know, lunch trucks, before they were called roach coaches and they were, you know, seen as a blight. Now, you see some really tricked-out, great food from some of these, and I've seen cities create areas and districts where you can congregate a lot of these and they become a food court, and they improve areas that were very, you know, underperforming, they were bad areas, and they become suddenly a hip area and a cool area, and maybe that's a way to create even some economic development, certain pockets of the city that just have space, or we have, you know, lots that are large and people aren't going there, but if you have these and they're well-monitored, there's good, you know, security and good lighting, maybe these things can become a benefit. But I do want to go back to the point that the city attorney made, because I spoke with her off-record right now. One of the things that really is tricky and what's challenging to me, not just what happens in the residential, because you look at the different types of vending, you're talking about some that are stores that have like, you know, goods and, you know, they're selling produce, they're selling, you know, food that you prepare, but then you have others that are selling tacos and they're selling already, you know, it's like a restaurant. So there's a distinction between the two. The ones that are, that I've always seen that are difficult are the ones that park right up against, you know, brick-and-mortar restaurants that are paying, you know, they're paying fees and assessments at very high increments, and they're having to compete with like a mobile restaurant that parks right in front of them, has no fees to pay. And that's a very, you know, unfair, I think, you know, proposal for the person who's renting at three, $2.50, $200, $2.50 a square foot, and then this mobile vendor comes and parks right in front of them, and again, with the lights and everything else, and, you know, they're competing on an unfair basis. So I think that we have to realize that, and if we can incorporate some, you know, some way to adopt something that's going to be fair to that brick-and-mortar restaurant to make sure that they succeed, because a lot of our restaurants, look, they're, you know, they're right there, some of them are just making it, some of them are, you know, new, and they're fledgling and they can't compete sometimes with these others that come in. So to the extent you can help address that as you go through this, I'd appreciate it. And again, I just think that rescinding the previous ordinance and looking at lessons from the past and what we did wrong, I think will help us as we go forward on this, so I'm glad we're tackling it.
All right, why don't you continue, or that's pretty much it?
That was it.
Good job.
All righty.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, just wanting to know with our city manager, our city attorney and our planning director and our code enforcement supervisor, what are the next steps? Okay, this is the first study session that's come before us, what's the next timeline? And then, you know, it's important for us to have these timelines, you know, if we're going to do the rescinding and the different options that they come before us, and when is that going to take place?
Well, at this point, I guess the objective will be to get direction, so the city attorney can then work on the proposed ordinance to rescind what's on the books at this point. We can begin to draft the, based on the recommendations, our recommended ordinance, and at least prepare a draft within, I don't know, 30, 45 days.
Fantastic, so just, I'm wanting to help staff out here, so I can make a motion, one is to direct staff, based on your recommendations, to rescind the current ordinance that we have in place and to work with our city attorney, and then number two, that you will come back to us, I'll say 45 days, with recommendations of some of the new options, unless, Mr. Planning Director, you need more than 45 days.
Yeah, we need more than 45 days.
How about 60 days?
I would say...
90 days?
I would say 90 days, because we also have to go to the planning.
Okay, because I like you, Mr. Planning Director, 90 days.
Thank you.
Then you might ask for an extension, second. Those in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed to motion carries.
He came up real quick.
He knew where you were going.
He's like, Alvaro, 45 days.
Do we have a Spanish translator? Please, as that person comes down, let me call on Michael Kablukeyan, and after we hit the translator, I go for Mr. Chavez. Michael, go ahead, and then after that, Venacio Chavez.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Michael Klubnikin. Contrary to popular thought, the Titanic did not sink because of negligence. It sank because of the avarice, and that's a big fancy word for greed and pride and arrogance. We got 16 airtight containers, bring on those waters, we don't care about stinking icebergs, we're the Board of Supervisors. And the reason I'm segueing that into that, today, the Board of Supervisors just passed a ordinance, Ethics Commission. You say, oh gee, that's a good idea. No, it's not, because false security is more dangerous than no security. At least no security, you know, you're vulnerable. False security, you're thinking you're secure and you're vulnerable. And I'm here to tell you, the Ethics Commission they just passed has no teeth. The public is being duped, it's a false flag, black flag, if you're in the military, decoy, whatever you want to call it, it's to cover up an illegal, to show you how arrogant this board is. This commission that put this Ethics Commission deal together excluded the complaint that started it, and the complaint that started it was against the district attorney for violating a mandated law. And they excluded it from the due diligence of these 16 documents, that's why I brought the 16 compartments. Eilia is an indicator that the Board of Supervisors stirred, steered the county into the rocks. I am. The Titanic captain saw the iceberg, the whole crew saw, they had the state-of-the-art, they couldn't navigate themselves away from the iceberg because of avarice, arrogance. And that's the point the Board of Supervisors, you guys are one of 34 cities, and those shenanigans is going to wreak havoc once again. We're at the 21-year, that's a Fibonacci number, 21. We're at 2015. Indictments were handed out in 1994 to the Board of Supervisors. Are we going to revisit those times? You tell me, earlier you talked about putting your interests subject to the people's interests, and you guys do that, I see that countless times. They're the opposite. A state assembly removed the internal auditor, who's been their buddy all these years doing bogus audits, removed the entire department. They reappoint him as a performance auditor, because he's their buddy, they know his dog and his cat. That's called putting your own interests above the county's, because that was part of the model, of the auditing model of the county that has been annihilated by the Assemblyman, the internal, the Attorney General has stepped in about the Office of Independent Review, that's another thing that's being investigated. So this Ethics Commission is a false flag. So I'm just giving everybody a heads-up, things aren't always what they seem to be.
Venacio Chavez.
Señor alcalde, señores concejales, mi nombre es Venacio Chavez y vivo en el 408 East Civic Center en esta hermosa ciudad de Santana. Con el fin de revitalizar el centro de la ciudad, en los últimos años, la ciudad de Santana junto con la oficina de bebidas alcohólicas ha otorgado licencias a establecimientos para el consumo de bebidas alcohólicas. Pero cuando cierran estos establecimientos, sus clientes vienen a nuestros vecindarios a seguir tomando, a formar marihuana, e incluso entablar relaciones sexuales o jugar a rancones con sus carros en los estacionamientos y las calles de nuestro vecindario. Ya varias veces, tanto mis vecinos y yo hemos tenido que llamar a la policía para que arresten o por lo menos multen por sus actos a estos infractores de la ley. Sin embargo, la policía no llega, o si llega, los infractores ya se fueron. Pero lo más preocupante son dos cosas. Primero, es cuando ha llegado la policía y todavía encuentra a estas personas haciendo actos ilícitos, la policía no les hace absolutamente nada, solo los corre del lugar. Segundo, la policía al parecer no está levantando los reportes de estos actos. So, al no haber reportes de crímenes, nuestra comunidad luce como si fuera la más segura de toda la ciudad de Santana. Como, si esto no fuera suficiente, la oficina de bebidas alcohólicas está en el proceso de otorgar otra licencia más en el mero centro de nuestra comunidad, en el 601 East Santana Boulevard, esquina con Minter. A una cuadra de la escuela elemental de San José, a unas cuadras de la escuela elemental Gafio, exactamente la misma cuadra de la iglesia San José, enfrente de la iglesia Betel, y alrededor se encuentran otras tres iglesias, La Luz del Mundo, Alcanse Victoria, y otra más. Y por último, el estacionamiento de este negocio está anexo a dos casas habitaciones, habitacionales, perdón. De acuerdo con la oficina de bebidas alcohólicas, este no sería un impedimento para otorgar esta licencia, pero sí lo es por varias regulaciones. Primero, el funcionamiento de este establecimiento aumenta enormemente el riesgo de accidentes de tráfico y de personas caminando por personas bajo la influencia del alcohol a la llegada y salida de los estudiantes de estas dos escuelas. Segundo, afectaría el funcionamiento de estas iglesias por personas bajo la influencia del alcohol. En el área también aumentaría el riesgo por accidentes de tráfico que pondrían el riesgo, la vida, a la llegada y salida de los peligreses. Tercero...
Ya está en rojo la luz.
Según, según, si permítame, muy rápido, con la, según, con la, de acuerdo con la oficina de bebidas alcohólicas, el estacionamiento del negocio tiene que estar a más de 100 pies de distancia, lo cual solo los divide la pared entre la habitación y el parking.
Gracias.
Y interferiría con la paz y la tranquilidad del vecindario. Yo sé que es muy corto el tiempo, y me faltó una hoja, pero aquí traigo más de 450 firmas de mis vecinos. Se va a dejar a la señora Michelle, porque creo que ella es la encargada de esa zona, y como no alcanza el tiempo, voy a tener que venir en el meeting que viene. Gracias, muy amable.
Okay, you have two minutes.
I'll speed up. Venacio Chavez, 408 East Civic Center, and in order to revitalize the city, the downtown of the city of Santa Ana, and as of late, the city of Santa Ana, along with the Alcoholics Beverages Office, has given these licenses to the sale and consuming of alcoholic beverages. And when these establishments close, their clients come to our neighborhood and they continue smoking marijuana and even having sexual relationships, and even racing their cars around the parking lots and our streets. I, as well as other neighbors, have had to call the police on several locations for them to arrest these people, or at least to find them because of their, to find these lawbreakers. And the police, sometimes they don't show up, and if they show up, the lawbreakers have left, and the most concerning thing is this, first of all, is that when the police does show up and finds these people here doing these illegal activities, the police does absolutely nothing, they just kick them out of the place. Second, the police is apparently not reporting these acts, and if we have no crime report, our community looks like a safe community in Santa Ana when they have a different reality. And if this were not enough, the Alcoholics Beverages Office is about to give a license to an establishment in the center of our community, 601 East Santa Ana Boulevard, corner of Minter, a block away from San José Elementary, a few blocks away from Garfield Elementary, and that block is St. Joseph Church, Bethel Church, and other churches around there. Finally, the parking lot in this place is next to two homes, and according to the ABC Office, this would not be a detriment to giving them the license, but it is because of these things. First, the, this establishment causes higher traffic accidents and the people walking under the influence of alcohol when they go, when the students go to school and from school. And second, it would affect the operation of the church, because the people under the influence of alcohol would also be at greater risk of traffic accidents and could endanger the people and the churchgoers. And third, according to the regulations of the Alcoholics Beverages Offices, the, this parking must be at least 100 feet from a home, and that's not the case, because they're just divided by a wall. And this would interfere with the peace and tranquility of the inhabitants because of the drunk people around the area.
Thank you, Sessa. Thank you. Dave Newell, followed by Steve Rocco. Is Dave not here? Steve Rocco, why don't you come on down, followed by Edgar Vasquez. Edgar, are you here? Okay, let Steve go, and then you'll go right after him, Edgar, and then after that, Rick Nidermeyer, if you could come down, you'll be next, and Victor Payan. Please, go ahead.
The update on the recall for Polito and Raccacas. As of last week, the Raccacas petition was accepted after nine revisions. From what I understand, Polito, you said that Neil Kelly's is doing a good job. He's doing a good job of fixing elections and fixing petitions, too. But anyway, the people should have the right to recall both of you and at the same time. But I'm not really here for that, I'm here to talk about Red. Red is my first experience with the homeless, and he was also my first nomination signature when I ran for mayor in 2000. But unfortunately, his address, like many others, are bogus, invalidated, and so I came up with a solution for that, that I would register the homeless myself. And flash forward, many years later, to 2012 in December, and I register somebody called John Berry. Well, unfortunately, John Berry's petition has errors in it, too. And so, I'm legally required to go to voter's registration and turn it in within a certain amount of time. And I'm given two different suggestions, not suggestions, requirements. One of them is from Neil Kelly, is you must find John Berry, and another one is from Evelyn Bell, who's no longer alive, she's deceased, she says, no, you don't. So anyway, I'm thinking about exactly what to do about John Berry, and an article comes out in the LA Times, which, this is a blow-up of it, and there's an Anaheim police officer in the Santa Ana Rivers saying to Mr. John Berry that, you know, your life is probably in danger living in the Santa Ana River. So I either go look for John Berry and not have trouble, or I just let it go. Well, Evelyn Bell tells me that I don't have to, I just nearly need to turn it in. Unfortunately for John Berry, he gets himself killed, and this is, you know, it's about as baited as you could probably get this thing, and I'm lured to the death site. Well, after many, many years, and we catch, well, not we, but the police catch the person who killed him, Izzy Ocampo, who happens to be a registered Democrat, born in Mexico, so viva, you know, la raza, and all that other nonsense, and his goal is to kill as many white homeless people as he possibly can, including me. Well, so I finally get the autopsy report after many years, and it turns out that he's has punctures in his arms, and you either believe that he ate Ajax or he didn't eat Ajax. And John Berry's autopsy report, they won't even give to me, so they don't know exactly what happened to John Berry, I'm, he's murdered, of course. But the point is this, and how many other things happened during this time, autopsy reports, murders, you know, this has gone about as far as it probably should go. You need indictments, you need to be recalled, you need jail time, you and Raccacas both, and you know what? The lives of white homeless people matter, too.
Edgar, followed by Rick, followed by Victor.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Edgar Sebastian Vasquez, and I'm representing Inter-American Sport Associations, a 25-years-old organization, and I'm also representing a few of my colleagues, and they couldn't come here. But the main reason we come here is because my colleagues and I will receive the notification, the closure of the stadium, starting January next year, for about six months. Well, the closure of the stadium, of this facility affects several thousand...
Excuse me a second, is Harald going around? We're probably going to have questions for him. Please continue.
Okay.
Here he comes.
Yeah, the closure of this facility affects several thousand athletes. Our community did not expect this closure. On the contrary aspect, they joined use agreement with the Santana Unified School District about install synthetic grass field in Godinez High School. Inter-American Sports, Veteran Soccer League, United Latin, Golden Starts, and myself contribute almost half a million throughout the surcharge for the new synthetic field. We were expecting to have this field installed sometime next year, but we didn't expect to have the Centennial, I mean the Santana Stadium closure. And also, I heard early in the agenda, and I read in the agenda, then seemed like a planning to close Centennial Number Two for a few months. As you know, we don't have too many fields. We have been working with the small fields, with the synthetic fields, even though it's a little bit high, the price to use them. But the athletes, they don't mind at all to pitch in a little bit of money in order to, to reserve and use the fields. But if you're planning to close the field, which is Santana Stadium and Centennial Number Two, we don't have any other alternative field. My question is, there is any way you guys can wait to close both fields into we have the new synthetic field in order to have like another alternative to use the field? Because as you know, I really appreciate the opportunity of the, the new city council, I mean, just the city manager, when he came here, he realized and there's a huge...
Harald, could you just step forward? I think we got your question, Edgar. Could we, could we do anything with that, do you think, coordinate in such fashion? Please go ahead.
Yeah, um...
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but since this is a time for public comment, we should, if you don't have any other public comment, direction can then be given to the city manager, I just want to make sure...
All right, well, we have two other public comments.
Correct, we need to finish, you know what I mean? Now is the time for public comment, and so this item's not on the agenda, so, just like anybody else, they need to be responded to in an enormous fashion.
Can you just go meet with Harald though?
Sure.
Please. Rick, come on down.
I'm back. I have two things to ask the city council to think about. The first thing is, last year about this time, I spoke with, I spoke with Roman Reyna about the block grants available, and I was referred to the city manager. And I had folks that attended two days of classes for the block grant, because we had to go to the class to apply for that. Well, after we finished the classes, we found out that the minimum grant amount was thirty thousand dollars. I don't need thirty thousand dollars. Last week, or two weeks ago, I noticed on, I couldn't be here because I had a soccer match, that you guys said, status quo, we're just going to prove what we did last year. Well, it doesn't work for the little guys. I'd ask you to revisit that, and maybe smaller amounts or it spreads the wealth to the other organizations that are nonprofit. And then my other concern is, three weeks ago, on a city field, we were playing a soccer match with eight, nine, and ten-year-old players, and lo and behold, the drone came, comes flying by. Drone lost its energy right down on the middle of the field while the kids were playing a game. And I know drones are something up and coming, and I know the FAA has started to work, work on registrations and stuff like that, but I think it's time the city thinks about, you know, potentials of suits from working, playing on park and rec fields and something dropping out of the sky. I've already talked to the school district about it, and they're looking into it as well, but I think it's something for the city council to start talking about. I, I just think that it's a opportunity to, to stop something that happens before it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Victor? And Madeline, you still wanted to speak, right? Because, why don't you come on down, you're right after Victor.
Thank you, council, city manager. As the Council of Bolivia did speak earlier, we do have a one final film in the OC Film Fiesta, and so that doubles the amount of councils that we had at the festival this year. We want to thank you all for your support of the Film Fiesta in the first five years as we transitioned into media arts Santa Ana. This was probably our, our biggest, most ambitious festival, and we did draw people from throughout the county. We had people who, someone who came to one event who said he had not been in Santa Ana for thirty years. And it's a very, it's, it's, I think the kind of cultural development of the city, you know, can really focus on, festivals are really great way to bring people and to promote culture and economy with a positive footprint. And, and our, our festival was so diverse this year, we had animation, we had student films, we had free films, we had silent film with Dolores Del Rio that was with a live orchestra. And as soon as we announced that, and who the composers were, David Spear and Joseph Julian Gonzalez, we got an email from San Antonio who wanted to mount it, and we've had, you know, interest from people who saw it for wanting to buy the music, and just really had a tremendously moving experience and celebration of, you know, our history here in the county. And also, we work with a lot of local businesses, the Santa Ana Business Council, Ocigente, restaurants like Sarignana's, the oldest tamale, oldest Mexican restaurant in, in the county, with Orange County School, School of the Arts, the Digital Media Center, Robin's Nest, Kutsi, Marcus Gallery, CO4 LGBT Center, lots of volunteers, and, you know, people like Madeline Spencer who will spread the word, Richard Stein and Arts OC. And like I said, as we continue, we really want to build on what we've created before and thank the city for their participation. And, and we had good press from the OC Register, the OC Weekly, Spanish language press, and we're not done yet. So the stars of the Bolivian film will be here on Saturday, Carla Ortiz was a big star, and Bernardo Peña, who is also a star. It's an important film, because as we also celebrate Latin American Day, it's important to remember why there were waves of immigration to the US in the seventies, and this film is very brave. It's been playing continuously in Bolivia for a year, and it's wonderful for high school students, college students, just to get a dialogue of, you know, what's, what's happening, you know, with American foreign policy, and kind of to see how far we've come. So we're very excited. This is a fundraiser screening for both the Film Fiesta and the Frida, and of all the people I want to thank, I, I do need to thank Logan and the Frida for their participation and generosity in, in helping make this vision that we had, you know, the most that it could be. So I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you, Victor. Madeline, please, you have the floor.
Good evening again. Okay, so this is for the Police Officers Association. With sweeping sentiments across the nation standing in critique of the ethics of America's police force, in the wake of officer-involved shootings in Ferguson, among other states, police accountability, ethics, and responsibility to those who our police have sworn to protect and serve has come under deep scrutiny. In the city of Santa Ana, this is a conversation that many feel is long overdue, and fortunately, with the community-directed request of our strategic plan, which assures a community survey to create a community-oriented policing plan, with the recent work of the Human Impact Association, Connecta Council's Twenty-First Century Policing Forum, the forum which took place at our local investigative news agency, The Voice of OC, and in a series of community meetings on body cameras that, where there were only a handful of police present, the topic has been breached. Rojas has taken the heat, and barely any of the police association were at these forums to defend themselves. Today, an article appeared describing the POA attacking the chief of police. I'm unaware of the details here, but what I do know is that our community has fought to stop the zero tolerance policies which criminalize our youth while police get paid leave with the continued promises of a job after very disturbing acts of misconduct and abuses of power. If you think that the chief of police should go easier on you all, I think in fact the disciplinary actions that have been taken are not enough. In this city, there has been too little, too late, and your misconduct proves that you feel yourselves above the law. You folks think not, think that nothing, you think nothing of taking armored vehicles in and putting gang injunctions on our community, but our question is, who will control your gang, as it seems you are the ones who need an injunction, and all of you are guilty by association in my book. Don't you dare reprimand someone in your charge for doing the right thing, for this only stands to further highlight your list of wrongs, and for those wrongs, I stand here to say that there should be zero tolerance in this city. Let the dialogue continue, because as you well know, this community will not let this issue rest until reform is implemented and we get the best police department, that the continued majority of our general funds are being used to buy.
Thank you. With that, Mr. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protan, and City Council. I only have one item, and it's good news, there was a lot of discussion about bringing the CERT program back. That program hadn't been done since the fire department was part of the Orange County Fire Authority, and I'm happy to report, we've had two already, fifty people, last weekend we had thirty, and we're planning to do eight a year, four in English, four in Spanish, so that Santa Ana is ready if we do have a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, let me go to Councilor Martinez, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just noticed we got a panic button. Can somebody explain what that means?
What?
I just noticed the panic button. In case Sal gets panicked, do we press the button?
It was for me, it wasn't for you.
Is that myself?
It's when too many consent items are pulled.
Yeah, too many consent items, I haven't been paying attention to this panic button here. Are you aware that this panic button is here, Mr. City Manager?
Push it and see what happens.
Nothing? Oh, it's not active. Oh, then why do we have it? Anyhow, let me get back to my point, just like alarm me, I thought like, whoa, what's going on here? I want to, one, thank, and he's out there talking to our Parks and Rec Director, but it was a concern to me that this issue was brought up to me, that Eddie Westfield would be closed from four to six months. Mr. City Manager, when things occur like that, I think the city council needs to be put on notice that these things are occurring. We shouldn't be hearing from our residents that these things are going to be happening, because Eddie Westfield is a, is a venue that many members of our community use, and you know, we need, we need to know exactly why it's being closed, giving enough notice, and if we don't know, I was caught flat-footed at an event last week when this was brought to my attention, it was brought to the attention of other council members as well. And so if you could figure out a way in your report or your communications of how to, how to inform us when things like this are occurring, so that we know and we have a response for members of the public, in particular, Mr. Vasquez, who's very concerned, and his other soccer organizations, and just what the rationale and the process is and the reasons why we're doing it would be greatly appreciated, because items like this, that, that impact our community have a huge impact on us as, as a mayor and council, and we need to make sure that we're okay with that, that if we want to shut Eddie Westfield for that long, that needs to come to the city council. I think four to six months is way over the top, and I'm still unclear why it's going to be closed for that long period of time, if that is the case. Second, I would like to, one, also inform the community and my colleagues, if they can still, you know, as you know, we approved in our fiscal budget last year, this, this June, our mini grants, ten thousand dollars. For you council members who don't want to utilize the money, let me know, I'm putting out the notices out in the community, but I think we need to do a better job in communicating to our folks within our different districts or citywide that we have these monies eligible, ten thousand dollars per each council member. You know, June will fast be approaching us, next year, we want to make sure that we utilize those funds appropriately. So I want to encourage our residents, our community organizations that are out there that want to leverage your funds to have community events, do placemaking events, or you need help with permit fees here at the city, that you fill out the application that's available online, or contact our city manager's office, and they can assist you with that process. Finally, I wanted to invite you all to our second annual event, Somos Sunday on Main Street on November fifth, we are closing down Main Street. I know our Parks and Rec is in charge of that, and they're trying to do their marketing, but Mr. City Manager, I'm wanting to make sure that we take it a step further now with our communications person, what is it that she can do to help our Parks and Rec Department? We got to spread the word. Last year, we did do such a good job, and I know we're going out to neighbor, it's not about just going straight to neighborhood associations or businesses that are being affected, we need to go citywide, we need to focus, you know, as well, even from a regional perspective. The city of Garden Grove made that happen, unfortunately, last weekend when they had their event, it was over a hundred degrees. Oh, I set the wrong dates, November's, what date is it? I'm, I'm wrong, it's not November fifth? It's November eighth, excuse me, November eighth. Well, my bad, thank you. But I'm wanting to make sure that we do the job that Garden, that Garden Grove did, you know, even though it was a hundred-plus degree weather, and they changed their time from three to ten PM, to three to five PM, they had no one there, when the sun came down, you know, a lot more folks came by, and, you know, they were able to outreach, what are we doing? I know OCTA is coming, and they're going to have a booth, but what are we doing for OCTA to help us, go out there and market that? What do we do this year? Do we put any of these posters within the bus shelters at Sartek? You know, did we use radio? Did we use media? You know, I see that, you know, we got an email today from Jeannie Huarado, just indicating that we're going out to the Neighborhood Association and the businesses and NEXO, and we're going to go out to the kids at the Santa Fe High School District. You know, what else are we doing, Mr. City Manager, to really market this event? So it could be a, a success, and I know it's our second annual year, and, you know, we're tying it to Dia de los Muertos, which is that Saturday, that Friday, Saturday before, to, and, and why, the theme, what we're calling it, and I don't want to call the executive director, I wanted him to come and talk a little bit about the theme, but he's busy back there. So I'm not sure, if you could possibly expand on why we're doing what we're doing on November eighth and the theme?
Thank you, Councilwoman. It's a coincidence that those events are the same day, so they're trying to tie them together to have some synergy and maximize the, the event. I know that Mr. Moet provided an update on marketing efforts. We're working very hard to make it a success, and we hope that it's even better than the one last year. And I'll ask...
Alma?
Alma, to make sure she touches base with Huarado and give the councilman, the council more information on the marketing program.
Yeah, just wanting to make sure that we're utilizing our communications person with events that we're having in our community, we need to connect the dots and what, how we actually, you know, broaden our scope of how we actually market events like this. And, and finally, I just wanted to also indicate that as we move forward with these events that we're having annually, I know we have the holidays coming up and the tree lighting, parking and, and other issues are always going to cause problems for us. And so, notice to our neighbors or where we have in these events, that we do it in advance, and that we constantly have some form of communication with them, specifically in the downtown and those residential areas. I think sometimes we get lost, and now that we have our new downtown liaison, maybe that he can connect those dots. You know, we're facing other parking challenges with our neighbors now in the downtown, and we're trying to address, and options are going to be coming before us, but as more of these events come, you know, the city council needs to be abreast, you know, Roman was very focused on the 5K, we're focused, we were pushing it, going out there, marketing it ourselves, on Facebook and challenging people. You have to utilize us as council as well, and how can we help and spread the word? We're not getting enough of the information, you know, the event's about a month away, you know, when, when we started with the 5K, it was two or three months in advance, you know, it was on his Facebook, Davi was sharing it, I would share it, it was just going on and on and on. The people, I think, got sick and tired of us forwarding it, but it was consistent, it was consistent across the city council who has Facebook that was sharing this information. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that we work with our communications person and our other staff, and tying us in, I think we made it very clear that communication externally is very important to our constituents, and we're spending tons of money for these events, we want to make sure that we produce good events, and number two, that the council is aware about these events, because, you know, this is my first time speaking in public comment, possibly for the, you know, we haven't been able to do so, but during the fiestas, you know, some issues arose about not having carnival, I wasn't in town, and the council wasn't abreast, wasn't aware that this occurred, and so I'm just, I, I, and I'm stating this publicly, because these events are extremely important to us, we want to make sure that we're in the know what's going... to us, we want to make sure that we're in the know what's going on, we don't want to micromanage you or your staff, but we want to know if any changes are going to occur when an event is going to happen, we want to know the timeline, the process, and assuring that if anything does change, to inform the City Council, so when we're out there in the community, we're not flat-footed, oh, well, we didn't know that we were not going to have Carnival rides, right? We're at the event when this is occurring, and people, you know, very difficult for us to respond, and not even have a response, and so I just want us to be cognizant of that, you and your staff. And with that being said, have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to say much, because Councilwoman Martinez took all my time, I'm just teasing. No, I just wanted to inform the public, there's a little, you know, anytime there's a little bit of excitement in our schools, and they're having assemblies this week, Santa Ana High School is undefeated in league, and Sagerstrom High School is, they're going to be battling it out, I believe Sagerstrom High School is also undefeated in league. So I think it's the homecoming for Sagerstrom, if I'm not mistaken, and so it's going to be a very exciting game, those are, the kids get excited, parents get excited, so I just wanted to encourage people to go and enjoy themselves and cheer on our youth. I just want to also ask that the council, I think it was a great day today to allocate funds for our community, as we said. I think something that's occurred this year that's never happened in the past is that you actually have our Police Officers Association, our city employees, who have come to the table and have said, okay, this is what we're going to take, you gave us half of this money that you have, and we're going to utilize it. There wasn't a lot of politicizing this, it's a different way of doing business, it's a more efficient way of doing business, and I think that's credit to you, Mr. City Manager, and your staff, and we were able to give the other half to our community. And so, like I said, we don't, we can't do everything at once, but we can, we're certainly making a step in the right direction. And I just want to caution our council too, you know, there's people that come up and speak, and they hyperbolize sometimes, and I think it's important that we get the facts when people come up and say, oh, you know, people are doing this, and our police department's not doing anything about it. I think there's more to the story than that, you just can't go arrest people if they haven't done anything wrong, and so, or if you don't have the proof. So we have to be real careful with that. I think there were some pretty broad strokes on that ABC license that were being made, and so I just want us to, not, not that we do this, but sometimes there's a knee-jerk reaction, I think we have to make sure that people bring the correct facts and there's proper channels to do that. I appreciate people that come up and speak, I just want to make sure that afterwards they could be directed to the proper staff as well. There was some mention today of our police officers, police officers, you know, I'm a teacher, and so as council member, I'm Esquerra, I take a lot of pride in what I do, I enjoy it, I really am surprised I get paid for it, I mean, I love doing what I do, and I can give you my check if you give me yours. But, but no, the reality is, I do it because I love it, and I do get frustrated when I do see an educator who is not living to the level of expectations that I put in. And I told my son, I said, we're getting up early in the morning, because he drives with me to work, I said, and we're going to, we're going to be there at 5:15 AM, and he says, why? I said, because there's a few things that I've thought about that I want to put into this next exam, and we put those kind of hours in. So it's frustrating when other people don't do that, and why do I say that? I say that because we have a great police force, and sometimes there are some people that put us in a rough position, it does not mean that our entire police force is, should be painted with that same brush. So Chief, you have a tough job out there, but I think you're doing a great job, just keep doing what you're doing, you have the support of this council, and officers, you have the support of this council as well. Those of you who are doing an excellent job, which is the vast majority, keep doing what you're doing, that's why we have the quality of life that we have in this city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think a lot has been said, I just want to recap on some of what the council member said. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for getting us to the point where we were able to wind up our negotiations with our service employees and with our police officers as well, and I want to thank their negotiating teams and their leadership as well. I think it got us here, we're in a much better place, and I'm glad that we're being fair with everybody, and I think that's all anybody can ask for. There was some conversations about, you know, what we should term these funds that we allocated tonight, and some future funds that we may have. Again, surplus is a tricky name, whatever we term it, I think we, I think we're responsible tonight in the adoption of the matters that we funded. Certainly, we'd all love to fund so much more, there are so many things that are worthy and meritorious of the funds that we have. Unfortunately, we have to be very careful and judicious with the monies, they are one-time monies, I think that we have to be careful in funding things that are ongoing concerns, and we have to be disciplined, and I think that's what we were tonight. I know that we had conversations about doing one thing or another, I pulled a couple of things off that list that were important to me, but I realize that deferred maintenance things that haven't been touched in 10 or 15 or 20 years are more important, and I think that once we tackle those, I hope we get ourselves to a place that we can start funding important things. And I don't want to have us forget the point that the council member made, Councilman Tina Hedo, when he was talking about, you know, look, this is a very unique moment, it really is, and so I want to thank our staff, I want to thank my colleagues, I want to thank the public, because it's not, it's not common for a council to be at a place where we, it's not really a surplus, but we have monies that we can allocate and address things, doesn't happen often. I mean, look at Stockton, look at San Bernardino, look at Vallejo, they're in chapter nines, I know attorneys that are working on their bankruptcy cases. So for us to be here is very unique, and for us to be an all-Latino council, where people, when we all came on and they said really horrible things about us, the bar was set very low, the scrutiny is always very high, every decision that we make is scrutinized to the point where we're under a microscope, and for us to have good results after eight years, it's a, you know, it is something to reflect and say, well, why doesn't the press pick up on that? Why don't they report that story? For a city this large, to be as responsible as we've been, to have the successes that we've made, I just don't understand why this isn't a story. You know, I don't understand why people aren't talking about that. I get it, we don't do it for those accolades, we don't do it for those, for those things, but what we do is, I think we do it for the residents and because we love the city. And I'm very, again, I'm very proud to be here tonight with my colleagues, because we get so much criticism for nonsense, and for the very nominal, small things, but for these major hurdles that we have, because it's a much healthier city, I think now, it's a much stronger city. So I just, I sit here and, you know, just feeling very grateful that we made good decisions, and thankful, and blessed that we, you know, we're here together and we can celebrate quietly. You know, maybe others aren't paying attention, but we are, and those that did follow us can see, you know, that we left the city in a much better place than when we found it. So finally, I just want to thank our police officers as well, I know there's been discussion about, you know, maybe some different opinions. I certainly think we have one of the finest police departments in the state and in the country, because we see what's going on in other cities as well. I mean, when we talk about bad fiscal policies, we also see bad management policies at departments, and this is one that, you know, we're not perfect, but that's the whole, that's the premise of the job that our chief does, which is to make it a more perfect department. We're not there yet, we strive for that, and I think we're very far, and we've come very far, so I'm completely confident in his ability to lead this department, I'm completely confident in the ability for the rank and file to do as good a job as they've done, and to be held to a standard that's important, because for, you know, for us to forget about standards and high quality of service is irresponsible of all of us. So I want to thank them for living up to a very high standard, I want to thank the chief to hold, to have held all his staff to a high standard. And for us, all we can do is just continue to, you know, press on, and with that, I want to wish everybody a happy Halloween, be careful out there, we're going to have a lot of kids, you know, out in the street, it's on a Saturday night this year, so everybody's out with just other traffic, so please be careful. We had a very, very ugly incident last year, last Halloween, if you all recall, and I'd hate to relive that again, it was a very tough moment for all of us as parents, for all of us as residents and people who love our children. So please be careful and have a safe Halloween.
Thank you. Let's go with Councilor Esquerra, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to begin by thanking our City Manager, our management team, staff, and our colleagues. I'm very proud to have been part of this vote to allocate this money to fix our deferred maintenance that needed to be addressed. Also, I'd like to thank Chief Rojas for his leadership, and I'd like to encourage him to continue to hold our police department to high standards. Finally, I do have a quick report for the OCFA. The OCFA is initiating emergency service delivery enhancements in Santa Ana with the goals to improve level of service and firefighter safety, decrease response time, and numbers of responding units. If any of you are interested, I can share this with you, but basically, it's a good thing for us. And one last thing, I want to wish my son a happy birthday, and I'll be home soon.
Councilor Raina, please.
Sure, like always, conserve water as often as you possibly can, we're doing really well in the city of Santa Ana, as well as the state of California, so we're doing good in that direction, although we still need some additional assistance and help. I'm glad that you brought up the Santa Ana football team, they, there's a pair of brothers, they call them the Killer Bees, these guys are absolutely phenomenal, I mean, they really look like Reggie Bush on the field, and they average something like 43 points a game. At homecoming, it was a 61 points, I mean, I haven't seen Santa Ana football this great since 85, when the last time they won CIF, well, I was on that football team. But they're doing actually fantastic, so it's going to be a great game against Sagerstrom, so I encourage you, got to come on out, again, they're the Killer Bees quarterback and running back, absolutely phenomenal running backs.
Who are you rooting for? Are you rooting for Santa Ana?
What's a saint, I was a saint.
Ah.
Go Saint!
Maybe we should put a wager on it.
Sure.
That would be good.
Sure.
Maybe I'll wear a Santa Ana hat or something if they win, maybe you can wear it.
Are you a Roadrunner?
I'm a Roadrunner, but my nephew plays on the Sagerstrom team, so I gotta stick with family.
A hat or a shirt, sure, absolutely. This past weekend, we had a great conference, partnering up with the Boys and Girls Club, we had about 55 students registered, we had a lot of volunteers, including some of our staff, who I think was pleasantly surprising, he's eager to roll up his sleeves and get back in there, so definitely appreciate coming on out, and all the volunteers and presenters, thank you for coming on out. A three-day, 23-hour investment into our young people was actually fantastic. I'm glad that my colleague brought up the Santa Ana $10,000 funding that we have available as well. I did host a community meeting to inform them what that looked like, and I know that some of my colleagues are already moving in that direction, I think Councilman Sardemento and Councilman Benavides has already started utilizing that. I was talking with staff about a potential project and what that may look like in supporting the neighborhoods, potentially purchasing a complete unit to host a movie in the park. So it would be, just plug it in, it would have the screen, the projector, the sound, that way, instead of renting it on a regular basis, we would have our own equipment, and we'd be able to check it out, and being able to affect that many more residents in the community, so I think that's fantastic. I think staff's bringing it up to us, maybe the next council meeting or the previous one, great. And with that, happy Halloween, be safe, and shop Santa Ana, thanks so very much.
Thank you. Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I also, I don't think we can say enough, just the safety, especially in light of the tragic incident last year, so with Halloween coming around, it's a great time to be out and celebrate with our kids and enjoy a good time out, but I do want to just remind folks, parents in particular, to be very careful with our kids out there, and making sure that everybody is well, just very visible, well-lit, flashlights and such, and for vehicles out, also, people are going to be driving out, just to be careful as well, as we drive out in the dark streets, it is getting darker earlier, so that's something to definitely be mindful of. Tonight, we had this opportunity to support our city and to address deferred maintenance, different areas that have needed fixing for a period of time, hopefully, our staff and our team out there, Team Santa Ana feels supported by council as well, this was very intentional on our part, too, to ensure that the needs in your respective departments are addressed, so, and at the end of the day, it is a positive, just a benefit to our residents, to our community. So as we look at the next round of potential funds, I do want to remind us, point I made earlier, to look at making some investments of improvements and new, providing new venues or assets to our residents as well. One of the things that has been, it's been mentioned today, I think a couple times, the idea of community engagement, something that this council is very much committed to, ensuring that our residents have direct access to our city, we're constantly, then to City Hall, we're constantly looking at ways to be able to make ourselves more accessible, using technology is one of the key tools. So I want to encourage folks, I recently was actually doing, was participating in a community beautification day with an effort called Love Santa Ana, Love Santa Initiative, and worked with our graffiti removal contractor with the, using the My Santa Ana app. So basically, tonight, what I wanted to make sure to highlight is that the app is extremely effective, that day specifically, we had a graffiti truck that was available to the Pico Lowell neighborhood, specifically during those hours, that the hundred, a couple hundred volunteers we had out there, and it was amazing to be able to take a, click a picture and send it out, and within minutes, because the crew was there dedicated, the graffiti was removed, and I'm not sure how many, how much, how many items of graffiti were removed that day, but it was pretty, just impressive to be able to see how quickly it was, the response there, and then I've used it a number of times since, other areas throughout the city, and it's very effective. So it's a quick download on App Store, and I believe we have it both, it's available for both iPhone and Android, so it's a tool that they're available for our community as we strive to serve our public better. Also, want to encourage folks to visit our website, santa-anna.org, bottom right, bottom left corner of the screen, there's a nixle, an icon there for you to be able to click and sign up to receive regular updates from the city, there, whenever there's anything having to do with community events, traffic issues, concerns, so we want to, again, make ourselves more available, accessible to our community. So one of the things that I do want to encourage and ask our communications manager to look at is how we can make that newsletter sign up a lot more, right now, it's kind of tucked away there in the bottom corner, and the term nixle is not too commonplace, you know, we know it and we use it, but a way that we can make it, again, just promote it and get it out there, so people are, sign up and make use of that. And a way for the community as well, to be able to work with the city, is to support local business. Wanted to highlight this shopping bag here, Shop Local, Shop Santa Ana, want to encourage folks to do that, that support our local economy, support jobs here, support our city, with that, have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just have three items. One, I know we had the discussion earlier about the fields, soccer field, Santa Stadium and all that, maybe if staff could just get back to the council through a memo as to what the outcome might be, I think we're just all interested in trying to figure out, is there a way to balance things out so that impact to the community is minimized? Secondly, I want to let folks know that I've been approached by a foundation associated with the Vatican, and there's a possibility we might be able to bring an exhibit from the Vatican to the Bowers. You know, this kind of stuff, you know, takes a long time to put together, you don't just do it one way, then there arrive the next day, but it, if we could do that, I think it would be a very, very positive development. We've had tremendous exhibits at the Bowers, but something coming from the Vatican, I think would be very special, and I'm thinking it would be extremely well-received. And then, thirdly, unfortunately, we've had a death here in the city, and I'm going to close in his memory, and that is Christopher Joseph Ruiz. He was a very decorated Marine, he was also very young, he was born on March 30th, 1986, he's only 29 years old, and he died in Afghanistan, you know, the vehicle, you know, plane he was flying in, they crashed into the runway, you know, in an accident, and he and the crew died. He is survived by his wife, Loveland, they have three children, Brooklyn, Carter, and Aria, several siblings, extended family, many friends, I believe, you know, council member... I believe, you know, Councilmember Reyna is a friend of the family. And our condolences go out to the Ruiz family. And especially as Veterans Day approaches and we think about honoring those that have served our nation, I think we have to, you know, take a moment and thank them for the, you know, their patriotism, their love of country, willingness to serve and sacrifice. And as we think of Christopher Joseph Ruiz, I think we have to thank him and his family for the contributions and sacrifices they've made in keeping us safe.
Mr. Mayor, can we also close the meeting in someone else's?
Please, go ahead.
October 17th. Yolanda Hernandez, she passed away on October 17th and she worked for Dr. Anna Nogales for 17 years. I think many of you have seen her over the years. She passed away from cancer and just wanted to, one, give my condolences to the family and to Dr. Nogales and many of the friends that Yolanda made over the years. She personally was a friend of mine and, you know, the fight that she had with cancer was a long one and just wanting to pay my condolences to her husband, her family and to Dr. Nogales and all the great work that Yolanda did in this community here in Santa Ana. Thank you.
And if appropriate, what I'd like to request of the clerk is, you know, that we send, you know, to both of these families, our condolences and the notes and the packages that we sent. I will note that, you know, often I get notes back. For example, last meeting, we closed in honor of, you know, John DeBol. And, you know, from his widow, I got a very nice personal note just thanking the council for doing that. So, you know, it is so difficult when people are grieving. I think it's the least we can do to people that are part of the city family. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Here, Vince.